Welcome. We are starting the May 9, 2023, meeting of the Fitchburg Zoning Board of Appeals. I would like to welcome everybody here, virtually or in person, to this meeting. If you wish, you are here virtually and you wish to speak on a matter, please raise your hand when the matter comes before us, and we will, in due course, allow you to speak at any public hearing. I would like to advise everybody that FATV is conducting an audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating their name and city of residence. So I see none in person or online. At this time, please take all of your electronic devices and place them in silent mode so that we can enjoy each other's company here. I'm going to begin this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I am going to ask Mr. McGlaughlin if he could lead us in that.
Yes, ma'am. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, the Constitution stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. McGlaughlin.
Quite well. It's my honor.
All right. At this point in time, we are going to begin hearing the matters on the agenda. We are going to proceed in order. I would note that if anybody is here virtually or in person on the last matter on our agenda, 52 Norwood Street, that the applicant has requested leave to withdraw that matter. So when we get to that item, that's what we'll be discussing. So I'm going to call the first item on our agenda, and that is ZBA 2023-09. This is an application for a special permit for 324 Lunenburg Street by Ruth Guzman. It is a special permit under the Fitchburg zoning ordinance to reinstate a revoked special permit, which was originally for the reinstatement of a vacant or abandoned building and conversion into a three-family dwelling pursuant to Section 181.336, located in the commercial district. If anyone is here in person to speak on this matter, if you can come up to the table, have a seat. Yes, you may. And I will need you each to state your name and address so we can note it for the minutes.
My name is Ruth Guzman, 324 Lunenburg Street.
Welcome.
I'm Diana Leon. I'm her daughter, and I'm at 19 Swanson Street in Winchester.
Thank you. All right. So we had... Yes, yes, sir.
I respectfully don't mean to interrupt. We revoke this?
We did.
Do we have to make a simple vote to rehear it, being that it's not been two years and it's mostly not substantially different?
I don't believe that that is the case with a revocation for violation of conditions.
Thank you. Just want to be clear.
So this is a continuation of the hearing. I believe our first time having this on the agenda was back on the March 14 snowstorm date. You had been granted, Ms. Guzman, a special permit on July 9, 2019, with a number of conditions attached. And you had proceeded to engage in some renovations, I believe, on this property. You had some issues, I think, with ownership being changed a little bit. You have remained the owner, but other owners have entered. And, let's see. Last known to be in March of 2021, the co-owner Roger Zulo granted an interest to Reyna Maribel Faria. And, but you remain an owner of the property.
Yes.
And you've had all of the co-owners or other parties in interest holding an ownership interest in the property have signed the application now, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So at the time that this was revoked, which I'm looking for... There had been a couple of things going on. There were some items, some conditions, that had not been completed. There had been a substantial delay in making any progress on the property. There had been a number of meetings that you had not appeared at, and this is prior to the March meeting with the snowstorm. And, you know, I'm going to say, I know that you had another contractor working with you, but I also know that you received notice of meetings and did not attend. The lack of progress and lack of communication created a lot of concern among the board members, particularly because this property is right on the commercial corridor. That's one of the entrance ways to Fitchburg. And I know different board members have different concerns. My particular concern was that there had been a repeated promise to complete the entrance way, which was, you know, the most visually obvious part of the property. And there had been repeated promises without action that that was going to be done. So I'm, we're going to hear your application for special permit today to reinstate the special permit. But I have great concern that, should we grant it, there's not going to be any difference, that you're still going to delay. And not that, you know, I would say that you want to delay. I'm sure you want to finish the project. But I am concerned about whether you have the means, and that means both the financial resources, knowledge of the work that has to be done, and the practical access to contractors, supplies. I don't know that you are, you know how to get the project done, and I don't know that you have the means to get the project done. So please, you know, you are welcome to make a presentation today, and we're going to, we're going to hear it. But keep that in mind when you're, when you're speaking to the board, that these have been the concerns. Okay? So Ms. Guzman, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I'm really sorry. I apologize for the misunderstanding here. I have a lot of issues with contractors in the beginning, that they, they practically steal my money. I put already more than $400,000 in this property. That is, I have to sell part of the property because I went out of budget and keep going with contractors that do a lot of bad things to me. And then the more interesting in finish this project because I'm spending money every month in bills that I send it to you, the proof that I paid like last month, like $7,000 in heating and electricity, water, real estate taxes. And this month is $5,000. So I'm paying monthly high, you know, bills. And I really want to get out of this. I'm very, you know, stressed about this. And I wanted to finish. Now that I hire Manny, that this is on the last year working in this property, and I see that in October 11, I receive a test for Mr. Mark, that the property was 90% done. So it's, it's like almost done. It's more, it's small things that happen. I put a lot of money in the sprinkler system that that was... We have been having problem with the pandemic. The board said we don't, we don't need a sprinkler, so we started working on the property. And then the city hall said that we need a sprinklers. So we have to throw away everything that we were done because the sprinklers. The tank for the water was so big that there was no way that we can put in the tank with the doors. We have to, you know, take part of the building to put this, this water, the tank, the big tank of the water inside. So had been a lot of things. Then the construction get the coffee, and the plumber get the coffee, and then everybody sick. So that coming delays and delays. And I'm sorry it's about the meetings. I don't mean to miss any meetings. Maybe some misunderstanding, that is why I have my daughter now that helping me because sometime English is an issue for me. I try to, you know, put my ears like... But she's now into the project, helping me because she knows how much I suffer with this. And I really want to finish as soon as possible. And Manny says that he gonna finish this, that is just a little, it's not too much. So just, I want to ask you, you know, have mercy. And just tell me what we have to do, and we will do, because I wanted to finish. And we working for five years, and now I'm close for five months because we close in January when I was waiting for the final inspection. When, because I don't show up to the meeting, you close, so I lose another five months. And every month is here in my pocket. So please, I ask you for, I'm begging, let me finish the project. And I promise it's the last thing that we, the last...
The last extension?
Yeah. The last extension, then I ask you. It's almost done. So we have been going through a lot with, with the mirror, with the heat, with the plumbing, with, I change a lot. And I, I try to do whatever you say because I respect what you say. I try to follow what you say. I, you know, we put it there to put like more like green. We don't do because the winter, but we try. And we fix everything you say. We trying to do. The first contractor, they don't do good job, but now, you know, I ask Manny, please help me with this, and he is willing to do it.
So who is Manny? Is that Manuel Mathias?
The Mathias Construction. He's the one that I have been working for a year.
I'm sorry, who is that?
That's a current construction worker that we have, but because it was revoked, we couldn't continue with the project.
He is, he is by soon. If you have any question or concern, you can... He's, he cannot make it tonight, but he is connected by soon.
Is he a licensed contractor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Are you aware of what still needs to be done on the property?
Yeah, we have laid up, but I don't know. It is something else. So we have a little problem here because sometime the board says one thing, and then the city hall one another thing. So it's confusing now, but we are trying to follow what you ask for. And I promise, and I promise that we will do.
Like if I, if I may add, like I, I know that like language and just so much miscommunication between contractors because we don't have one person in charge communicating with everything. The lack of communication, I think, was the major flaw. So I want to humbly apologize for irresponsibility on our part, lack of attention to letters and promises that weren't fulfilled because it does make us look irresponsible on our part. But because of this, I try not to get too involved in financial matters and family because I didn't think that was the best idea. But I think right now it's much needed, and I will take, you know, full effort to help her, making sure, just like today. We were early, made sure that we were half an hour early in case we caught traffic. We were on time. I told that I was going to help her through this, and I will talk to the contractors in case there's any miscommunication. They can all talk to me directly, so that way, you know, it's not finished again.
So is Mr. Mathias going to act as the general contractor? He's going to be the central point?
Yes. I did speak to him prior to coming here, and he said 95% of the project was done in October 2022. So it's little, little minor things that need to get done, but unfortunately, we couldn't do because of the permit being revoked. But we would do it in the time that you guys say, and I would be there. I would do the front, so that way while they do construction, at least it looks pleasant to the eye because, you know, I understand that you wanted to look nice to the community. I 100% agree.
All right. I'm going to, Mr. Mathias is here on remote, so I'm going to allow him to answer some questions from us. Are you, Mr. Mathias, are you able to hear and speak?
Yes, I can hear you guys.
Can you hear us okay?
I can hear you guys. Can you guys hear me?
We can. I'm going to first ask you, are you a licensed general contractor?
I am.
Can you tell us your number, please?
Stand by. Let me just pull it up. One second. General contractor license. One second. Just bear with me one second as I pull it up.
Sure.
Construction license 107573, CS 107573.
107573, CS 10573?
No, CS 107573. That's my license.
Okay. Thank you. And this license is under your name directly?
It is.
Okay. Are you contracted to act as the general contractor for Ms. Guzman?
I am.
Are you aware of what needs to be completed on the property?
Yeah. And if I, am I able to speak?
Yep.
Yeah. So the last time we were in the property, we met with, for a final inspection, which produced a, a list of anywhere from like five to 10 minute things that were rectified. The biggest thing was the sprinkler system needed a couple of changes. The sprinkler system contractor was able to remediate those changes. So we were under the impression that we just needed to call the inspector back into the property to finalize the, the actual project. When we contacted the inspector, he informed us that there was a system assist put on the property, but we were basically at the finish line. We had done everything that was required from an inspectional building code aspect. I do understand that there's a couple of other things that are needed from the, the board, but I've spoken to, to Ms. Guzman, and she's well aware of what needs to be done and is willing to make those, those necessary repairs.
Okay. So for your edification, this was in the decision that revoked your special permit. These are the conditions that have not been met. Condition number one, the decking has not been fully replaced, and it has not been painted. Condition number two, downspouts with, that were required in the installation of uniform gutters are sitting in rocks and have not been installed. Condition number 10, all exterior work was to be completed by September 13, 2022. Condition number 14, front porch and walkway to be repaired, including paint by April 30, 2022, not 2023. So, you know, I've spoken to the building inspector on what has gone on, and it's basically been nothing since September of 2022. The special permit was not revoked until the January 2023 meeting. I'm not sure why there was so long in between those dates. How long, sir, do you think that you need in order to complete the work, including all of the work that's required under the special permit?
So my understanding, based on the last time we were in the, in the property, everything else from rough inspection, final electrical sprinkler system, all those things were remedied. So I am under the impression that I can, we can make a phone call sometime this week or early next week and finalize those matters. In regards to the exterior of the property, the deck was redone completely after the last meeting. The only thing that it's outstanding on the deck is actually painting it. One, that's something obviously that's not required by, by the code. But we, I'm assuming Ms. Guzman is willing to, to, to give us the order to go ahead and do that immediately, and that's probably not going to take more than a couple of days to do.
Sir, you are required in this, not you, but the owner is required to comply with the conditions of the special permit, and those include painting. And that has been very clear for a long time.
And then, you know, we're willing to do it. So if that's one of the conditions that needs to be done ASAP, you know, it's, it's starting to warm up now. We could do that ASAP.
So I still haven't heard a clear timeline for completion. Can you give that to me?
I'm assuming the board meets every month?
Yes.
Based on the last inspection that we did, we should have a finished product by, by the next time the board convenes.
30 days.
I think so, yes.
All right. At this point in time, I'm going to open this up to anyone who wishes to comment during the public hearing. Is anyone here in person or virtually who would like to speak on this matter? Is there anyone who would like to speak in support? Is there anyone who would like to ask a question? Or is there anyone who would like to speak against? Sir, I've heard from you. Seeing none, I am going to move to see if board members have any additional questions. And this is going to be either for you, Ms. Guzman, or your daughter Diane, or for Mr. Mathias, the contractor. No, Mr. Byrne?
Well, I haven't got anything.
Any questions?
When we close.
Mr. Chartren?
So Mathias is stating that he can finish in 30 days. Do you guys think that's accurate? Do you guys have the finances in place to finish this in 30 days?
I mean, that's the reason why we got new people into the ownership, just to make sure that we have more investors to make sure that we could finish the project because we were running low on funds. So it could be finished. So at least financially, we know that she can afford to finish the job.
And one of the things I wanted to go over is what we do here is beyond the code. We're allowed to go above the code. So we're not looking for just final approval from building department. We're looking for the conditions to be met and final approval from this board before it's all said and done. That all has to get done. Do you plan on keeping that property, or are you going to sell it?
I don't even know. We trying to rent it, but I don't know that the bills was so expensive there that I don't know if the tenants gonna be able to afford it because last month $7,000 and this month $5,000 is too much. I don't know why the bills are so high that I send it like copy of the bills. But if we don't, if we cannot rent it, we have to sell it because I already put too much, and I already going a lot, a lot of money because the other contractors I pay. I not own no money, only Mr. Mathias, the last payment that I say when you get the inspection, the final inspection, but I already paid the most expensive thing. I, as I say, I pay more than $400,000 in this project that I don't expect it to spend that much money because I didn't expect that. But now...
So you think you're going to sell it?
Her original plan was to buy it and convert it to three-family and have it as a rental investment. That was her original plan. Now she's just scared of the property because of all the problems she's been having. I think she's just throwing it out there, but I think she still is going to initially continue with her plan of renting it. She want to kind of like to have that financial freedom long term.
Okay. That's all I have.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. This question is directed to Ms. Guzman. Do you feel confident that the project can be completed within 30 days, according to what your contractor is telling us?
Ms. Mathias, he promised, and knowing that is not too much, that, that is, is, it's almost done because we were waiting for the final inspection. I think that painting and just the most, a small thing because you already pass inspection of the plumbing, inspection of the electricity and the sprinklers, that we are waiting for the final inspection. So it's, it's a small things that I think that is enough time for Mr. Mathias to finish what is.
Well, having, just to add to that, I've had, you know, my mother has had, you know, over-promised, under-delivered contractors that I did my homework while this time, and I have some people that are willing to do the work if Mr. Mathias does not come through. So if you were able to give us this little permission of having the 30 days, at least I have backup because that's what, I think that's where our mistake was before. We didn't have backup. So when they gave us a timeframe and they didn't deliver, we just waited for them to finish the job as opposed to looking for another way out or looking for somebody else because we just kept following on through their promise. So I wanted to help her in finding somebody who may not be as cheap, but at least gets the work done and gets it completed in a timely manner. So I have, I have some people on the side for that.
That's good to know that you have a backup plan because even though you may have small things, there can be delays with small things, and 30 days is really a small window.
I agree. I was so stressed in the first contractor that I was pushing that, please, we have time. We have, we have this time to finish, that that contractor offered to kill me. He was so mad because I say, he was stealing the material that I pay. He was doing wrong work, and when I complained, he said, I gonna kill you. So that was a lot of things that happened in that property. Somebody vandalized, I don't know, the plumber or the contractor, the first one, that they cut the electricity, cut the plumber, that we have to start it again to do it.
I'm sorry so many things happened to you in this project.
It's like a nightmare.
Well, what our problem was, we did a lot of referrals by word of mouth, not our own research. So we didn't have proof of their previous work. It was like, I know a guy that knows a guy that knows a guy, and unfortunately, that didn't go to her advantage. So we learned our lesson this time around.
I'm assuming you've learned along the way.
Oh, a lot. I learned a lot from her.
Like I said, even though there's a lot of small things, you really need to stay on them to make sure that you hit that 30 day. Now that's, that's what you're saying. I personally think you need 60, but if you're telling the board that you can do it in 30, it's going to require some...
If you allow us 60 days to be, I mean, I would, we would really appreciate if...
I'd like to see a quality job done on it because it's taken so long, and I understand there's been a lot of pain and suffering in the process of it. And to be fair with you, I think 30 days is a small window. I would hate for you to have to come back to us and say, we need more time.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We all want to see this finished. What concerns me is the quality of the workmanship. The last time Mr. Byrne and I did a walk around in the property, and, you know, we're not here to micromanage the project, but our expectation that it was going to be done professionally. And I'm just going to point out a few things. On the front steps, the lattice work is pretty shoddily applied to the side of the steps. There's a basement door, a wooden door that's at ground level, and I don't know if the door can be opened because the gravel might be taller than the door. And I'm concerned about water infiltration. And then the downspouts, where they come down the side of the house, big sections were just put on the ground in a horizontal fashion and held up by rocks. So very, very poor quality work in some of the exterior. I would just like to see a punch list of all that stuff. I would just like to see a punch list of all that stuff cleaned up and done, not just so that it's complete, but so that it lasts for at least a reasonable amount of time. Without, and I, my uneducated guess at how some of it was done was to mitigate water from going back into the building. But I think some minor landscaping needs to be done to fix some of these issues. And that's really it. Get the property cleaned up and we'd appreciate it.
I would hope for that.
I'm okay with sixty days.
Thank you. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
And just to, was Mr., was Mr. Matias your contractor last year? Did he perform prior work for you?
Yes, he's, he's like a year with us.
All right, is there anything else you'd like to add before we move to deliberations?
No, I just, I just want to say thank you. I appreciate your passion. I appreciate your time. And I'm really sorry for all this happening. And, you know, as I say, it's not my intention. I, I wanted to make the property look good. I wanted to finish because I'm suffering more with all the expenses and all the bills. And I appreciate your time and I appreciate, you know, you give me the opportunity. Thank you.
Grantify it. Thank you. All right, the public hearing is now closed. We are going to move to deliberation. This means that the board members deliberate, the public and the applicant does not. Okay?
Thank you.
I am going to start off. Mr. Reynolds, I'm gonna, if you would like to make a comment, please go ahead. But I think you are the alternate here.
Just, I'm, I'm very supportive of the sixty days for the reasons mentioned. I think it's in the public interest to finish the project. And a little bit more time. I, I, I appreciate the thirty day ambition, but I think that sixty days is practical, more practical. The other point, I'm not playing defense and not playing offense, is just when I look back at, at my notes, I do want to note that, and this may be something that's already been covered, but back in October, pre-January, was the time, I believe, when ZBA 202226 was mentioned. And in the October meeting, we made reference to ZBA 2019-13. So let's just make sure we keep that connection just in case somewhere down the line, we don't get tripped up because of a numbering scheme.
Thank you very much, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chartrend, comment?
Yeah, so I think that the, the thirty day timeline will be tough with Memorial Day, right around the corner, Mother's Day. That said, if you can get it done, you can get it done and it'll be done. You know, there's no harm in finishing early, so to speak. But I think sixty would be all I could tolerate at this point. And hopefully it'll be done. I, I mean, they've obviously dumped a lot of money in the thing and got a lot of bad advice. It's tough. That, that project came down right in the middle of all the pandemic too. So these three families and up are difficult. I don't think the public understands how much the code has changed and what you have to do to use one of these buildings. It's a lot. So given that, that they're not professionals that do this every day, you know, it, it is somewhat understandable that mistakes were made. But I'm, I'm okay with sixty days. I think that's, let's get it done.
Mr. Byrne?
Thank you.
The timeline here sort of looks like the timeline for the Hoover Dam. I mean, like, what is this, three, four years now? Again, what I'd like to say is sixty days is fine. But what happens if they don't complete it in sixty days? What are we gonna do? That's a question. How about your?
If it's a question to me, where it's open to us to revoke the special permit again for lack of compliance with the conditions.
And that's it?
That'll be up to us at that point in time.
Okay. Good enough. Thank you.
Mr. Gallagher?
Like I said, when I was speaking to the applicant, I think thirty days is a realistic timeframe for what we're looking at. And I, I mean sixty days rather. And I even think that within the sixty days, it's going to take some tough management on their part to make sure that even though there are little things, that they're carried out properly. If it cannot be completed within sixty days, then I would move to revoke the special permit again. But I think that they've showed us that they can do it. And I believe that they can.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Mr. McGlaughlin?
Madam Chair, I'm in favor of the reinstatement with the sixty day timeline.
Thank you. As for myself, I do not believe that it is possible for the renovations to be completed within thirty days. And the fact that the contractor offered that as the timeline in which things could be completed do not give me confidence that the contractor knows what needs to be done and is able to complete the work. I have great concern that it's not going to be any better. I hear you saying that you will, you are trying to make it better. I do hear that from you. I am not just, I'm just not sure that it's possible. If Mr. Matias is the contractor that you had last year, that is the contractor that absolutely promised that the front porch would be painted by April 30th, 2022. So that doesn't give me a lot of confidence in his ability to complete it. That being said, I do want the project completed. And I am willing to offer the sixty days. But like Mr. Byrne, should we get to sixty days and it is not completed, you are probably going to hear a comment from me about not renewing, about revoking the special permit. With that in mind, as you proceed on this project, should we all vote in, in indication with our comments? If it's not working out, you should look for an alternative way to dispose of the property or exit your involvement of the property or involve somebody who has the ability to complete the project. That is not a requirement for me. That is just a suggestion that I, I think you need to be aware of the possibility that you may need to find another person who can complete it. But I hope that you are able to, in fact, complete within the sixty days like you wish. I, I just want to be very clear that this is not a situation where the board is going to hear a promise and then hear a reason why it couldn't be fulfilled. And then I, I'm not sure, I, you know, I am one board member, but there would have to be a really good reason for me to extend it beyond the sixty days. So that being said, I am going to ask for a motion or, or a discussion of conditions on the application for special permit.
I'll make the motion on ZBA 2023-09, grant the special permit as requested and open for discussion on the, and review on the conditions.
Would, Mr. McGlaughlin, would you accept an amendment on the motion that says all conditions from the prior permit, which is 2019-.
Dash thirteen.
Right here. Twenty nineteen dash thirteen be adopted with the, the additional condition that all work be completed by July 9th, 2023?
Yes, and with the bullets that I had mentioned earlier also be taken care of in that sixty day timeline.
Can you just restate them for?
Proper installation of downspouts, the basement walkout door to be in working condition with site work so that the water flows away from the building and not in towards the door. And the lattice work on the front steps to be done properly.
Okay. Thank you.
That's, that's all I can recall from the prior visit.
I think we have the other conditions in the, in the permit. Do I have a second on that motion amended? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None? Good luck. And I am going to suggest you get to work. Some of these items do not violate the cease and desist. The painting does not need a permit. So, good luck. I'm gonna ask, just because we are, we need to move forward, that you direct your questions to the Building Department. Ms. Mata is always available. Okay? Thank you and have a good night.
I just want to ask, all this requirement, you gonna send us by writing?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Calling the next matter, ZBA 2022-23, Paula Sanchez, 132 Pleasant Street. Please approach and sit at the table. This is the review of a special permit under section 181.94 of the Pittsburgh zoning code to change the structure, structures use from a one-family to a two-family pursuant to section 181.33, which is a previously abandoned dwelling in the residential C District. So please state your name and address for the minutes.
Paula Sanchez, 132 Pleasant Street.
Thank you. Now, we're here to review how you're progressing on the conditions. And I do understand that you had a visit today from Building Inspector John Morielli and that there was some discussion of some fixes and, and things that were going on. But let me review the conditions that you have on your special permit. The first is that any conditions or design standards recommended by DPW after review of the site plan and parking plan, particularly regarding the retaining wall and drainage system in the rear of the lot, will be incorporated as conditions of the special permit. I think we've all been out to see the condition of the, the wall that's going on. And I, I would be surprised if anybody didn't have any concerns. Can you summarize the status on that rear wall and state whether or not you've been following the DPW recommendations? You can't?
No, I'm, I needed only two states and that's it. I think I'm done.
Okay. There's a condition that you preserve the, the exterior architectural elements of the property or replicate them? Have there been any changes to the particular elements of the railing or the porches in the front?
No, it's not changed the design. It's the same design.
Okay. The property is to be used as a two-family. And I understand you haven't gotten a two-family permit yet. So I assume it's not being used as a three-family in the meantime. The project is be, to be constructed substantially in accordance with the plan that you submitted, except for any DPW modifications. And then the driveway and parking area to be paved with finished blacktop or pavers and we're to review on May 9. The paving has not yet been done. Okay. Do you want to say anything about what's been going on with the project or the status as we're reviewing?
No, I, I think I finished them all soon, also.
Okay.
So I don't know the time where you need. I need like a couple of weeks of finish.
You need a couple of weeks to finish?
Yeah, because supposed to be the, this weekend is finished, so.
So I, I, viewing the condition of the retaining wall in the back, I would be very surprised if that was finished within two weeks. Is that what your contractor says?
No, it's, it's, doesn't, I think it's not in two weeks. It's before for two weeks because it's work hard. It's too many people work over there because I need to finish.
Okay. And how about the paving? Do you have the paving scheduled?
I not talk for the guy for the construction, for the staff now because he supposed to call me back. And I need to talk for the next step because Mr. John asked me another staff different. So I need to talk him and the price and everything. So I don't know yet. But it's a little thing. It's not too much.
All right. I am going to read a comment that we had. I'm not sure what was going on with you in Hannigan Engineering, but they had submitted the parking plan. And then they revoked the certification of the parking plan. And then they stated that the issue had been resolved with the parking plan. Why, why did that happen?
Como, ese era como la parte de arriba. It's a metro, sorry.
If you know, please. Thank you, Ms. Mata.
Oh, el ingeniero porque no le había pagado la una cuota.
Because she was behind on the payments with him.
Ah, so you revoked the certification?
The last payment for $2,000. That's why he gonna stop.
Okay.
Yeah, keep paying.
I know.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to go to public comment. Is there any person here in, present in person who would like to make a comment for, on, or against this review? Is there any person online? Please raise your hand if so, if, who would like to make a comment for, on, or against this review? Seeing no one either in person or virtually, Ms. Sanchez, I'm going to go to the board members to see if anyone has a question for you. Okay? Mr. Reynolds? Mr. Chartrend?
At this point, what is left of the scope of work? How much, what, what is incomplete at this point?
I'm sorry. What do you say?
What's left of the work?
At this point, what is left is the stairs to access the exit for the emergency exit for the second floor and paving the rest of the parking. So the, the, the exit, emergency exit, the stairs is supposed to be complete by the end of this week.
Okay.
For paving, she had to make some calls for some companies to get some quote on those.
Okay. Nothing further?
Mr. Byrne?
We, Michael and I were out there yesterday visiting and we saw there's an awful lot of pavers that have to be placed in there. And the, the driveway has to be paved. And we asked you to talk to the inspector that was coming out. You recall? And tell him about your neighbor's wall that's intruding into your driveway?
He told me I need to talk for my neighbor. And maybe he have, have money and me supposed to have money. So, but I don't know who's the, my neighbor. So he told me, oh, you talk to him and go, going together. So, he told me, oh, you talk to him and go together for make this piece. I say, I don't know who's my neighbor. I never see this, this person.
So, I'm just going to...
Didn't you think that it was sort of somebody else's responsibility to call it in?
May I have a good question?
You may. I'm just going to state that I received a call from Mr. Morielli this evening.
Okay.
And would have some information to relate to the board, if that's helpful.
That would be great.
So, Mr. Morielli, the building inspector, placed a call to me this evening, right before the meeting, that told me about his visit with Ms. Sanchez. He states that he had a meeting with her, with her contractor, that there were issues with the deck in the back, that he spoke to the contractor about, that the contractor agreed to amend, that the retaining wall with the large granite blocks that we are all concerned about. He again spoke to the contractor about how to amend that, either by grating the slope and removing the blocks, or by removing all the blocks and building an appropriately supported and attached wall that accounts for drainage coming off the hill.
Okay, that's in the rear.
That's in the very rear.
This is in the very front.
And that, so this is the very front. And lastly, that he reminded Ms. Sanchez she needs to pave when this is done. He felt that the contractor was of good skill and of goodwill, and would comply with the changes that he pointed out. That's all I have to report.
Okay. Just while we're on the topic, the left corner of the beginning of the driveway, the granite wall has collapsed, which I'm sure her contractor is going to fix, because I would add that in as a condition.
There's a tree growing.
The right side is, it appears to be the neighbor's wall, and the wall is collapsing onto her property. What we conveyed to her was to ask the Building Department, and maybe if Mr. Barbador is here, he can help, that in a situation where a neighbor's property is unsafe and could cause potential harm to one of butter, can the Building Department issue some type of notification that that repair needs to be done? And maybe our in-house inspector can answer that question.
It can be done, yeah, if it's unsafe.
That was our concern, was all this nice work is going to be done, the driveway is going to be paved, and granite blocks are going to be falling onto her new driveway.
The problem's going to be that you'll have to have it surveyed to establish whose wall it is before you can even do any of that. So, that would be the first step, because right now it's unsafe and they don't know who's the owner. So, they're probably order somebody to get a plot plan. You could get a plot plan. You could get a lawyer, get a plot plan. You know, you could have them send a certified letter saying if they don't repair the wall once you have the plot plan, that you'll pursue other remedies. But first thing first would be establish who owns the wall, if it's half and half, if it's all on the neighbor's property, if it's on your property, and then go from there, because if they cite it as unsafe and it ends up being yours, it's going to end up being yours.
The problem is, sorry, the problem is over here, I think, is the tree. The tree is, you can make it again, this stuff, because the tree is can bad.
Maybe that has to come down too.
Yes.
I don't see why we couldn't have that come down as part of that, if that's what they did, you know, if that's what, whoever's going to repair it determines, or if that's what you wish. But yeah, I mean, if there's a tree growing through the middle of the wall, it is, it's not going to, not going to stay.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Byrne? Mr. Gallagher, any comments or questions for the petitioner?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I was out to your house last week, probably, I think it was either Thursday or Friday, and noticed that there weren't any contractors working on the property. When you started your conversation with us tonight, you said that you felt that you would be able to finish the project in about two weeks. Is that what you still think?
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, because the, it's only the, the problem is the parking, because I need to call how we doing for this stuff.
Okay. So, do you current, do you have people working there this week? You do?
Yeah.
And what about the inside of the house? Is that completed?
Completed. I pass the plumber, I pass electric.
Excellent, okay.
Everything is ready inside.
Okay, so it's just...
It's supposed to be, Mr. Young is giving me the temporary occupancy and the first floor of the first apartment.
Okay.
So, everything is completed inside. Only the two points is the parking, that's it.
The landscaping and the parking?
Yeah, landscaper is a little bit of stuff.
I just mean because of retaining walls and stuff.
They're going to work hard for this house.
I know you did. I know, it's been a lot of work.
So, the landscaping is nothing for me now.
You've done a nice job with it, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. McGlottson?
I would just like to have a condition that the site, we talked about this, get cleaned up within the next week or two.
I do it.
There is a lot of debris, and any of the materials, building materials that are going to be stored there, that they be, you know, stacked in orderly. How long is the truck going to be there?
Yeah, it has left today, in the morning.
It left today, great. I appreciate that. And I just, you know, this is a special permit, right, to allow for a two-family. Do we need to tie completion to occupancy on the second unit? I don't know that, but I don't want this project to be, and I'm sure you don't either, another two-year project before the board.
I believe Ms. Sanchez has received or will receive a temporary occupancy permit for the one unit only, which is of course allowed by right. And that, I believe that is either 60 or 90 day, and that if there's not completion, that that has the possibility of being pulled. So, I think there's still a lot of enforcement power there should the conditions not be completed, but I certainly don't mind adding the condition about occupancy prior to, or completion of conditions prior to occupancy.
On the second floor, you know, again, this is, we need parking. We need to get the project done, and it's looking good. Did a very nice job inside.
For my part, I would, I would like to thank you for preserving all of the architectural elements. It is of a great benefit to the city to preserve its architectural heritage, and you have a house that has some really beautiful elements to it. So, thank you for keeping them and not modifying them, and I hope you are able to preserve them. I am looking for a timeline for what I want to be a final review, because I don't want you to keep coming back and coming back. My only concern is that you don't have a contractor for the paving yet, and I don't know how long that's going to take. Do you think if we had a 60-day review, you would be done, or do you think that...
Give me the more longer, because for coming only one time.
So, that would put us into the September hearing, I think, because we don't have an August hearing.
Okay. So, I have another question. How if I finish before you give me the, you take off the temporary, or I need a within for the next meeting for takeoff?
You would need to satisfy all of the conditions and have the board sign off on it before you would get the occupancy permit for the second unit. So, if we don't see you until September, you wouldn't have the occupancy permit until September plus. So, if we, but if we see you in July and you don't have everything done, it's a big waste of everybody's time.
What day is in July?
11. July 11.
11? Okay, I try finish before to July 11. Give me the September, because it's not longer. If I'm ready, so I talk to, I don't know, somebody Mercedes, maybe. Talk you, I'm ready, okay?
So, I would work very hard to be ready on July 11, because I, July is usually a pretty busy meeting, because everybody wants to get everything in before September.
She wants to know, like, you know, so she's requesting to, for her review on September, so she has a little longer time to, to finish. But if she finish before that, like, you know, if she complete the work by July 11, can she kind of like come on July 11? Contact like, you know, requested that specific?
No, that would, that would violate kind of the notice that we need to give to the public. I know nobody's here, except for you. But if we set the next meeting date to be September, and then we change that and we hold it in July, there are people who have been planning in September and then missed the July meeting.
So, July 11.
So, the answer is no. If it's, if it's September...
Two months.
Can't come back in July.
So, July.
Does anyone want any further deliberation before we have a motion? Seeing none, I'd be looking for a motion to continue the review with the additional conditions.
I'll make that motion under ZBA 2022-23 for continuance until the July...
11.
11th meeting with the additional conditions that were discussed.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? All right, we'll see you in July. Have a good night.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
And I'm just going to announce, again, if anybody is here for 52 Norwood Street, which is the last item on the agenda, we have a request for that application to be withdrawn, and that's what we'll be hearing when we get to that item. I would like to move us along. It is past 7:00, and we are more than a half an hour late at this point, so I'm going to ask everybody who's with us, please be succinct and brief as you can. Next matter is ZBA 2022-32. This is PCM Auto Repairs and Sales, Inc., 33 Pritchard Street. This is the review of a special permit under Section 181.313D12 of the zoning ordinance to open a motor vehicle repair shop located in the downtown business district. Sir, welcome, and please state your name and address for the minutes.
My name is Ricardo Arugio, and my address, 33 Pritchard Street, Pittsburgh.
Okay, thank you. You have been granted a special permit, and you are operating at this point, is that right?
Yes.
I am going to review your conditions, and you can tell me whether or not you've met the conditions. The first is that the services are to be rendered by appointment only?
Yes, correct.
Okay. The hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 9 to 5, and Saturday, 8 to 3?
That's correct.
The dumpster is to be relocated inside the building within 30 days, correct?
Well, takes a little bit more than 30 days, because I have problems with the company to find a small dumpster, but it's already inside the building.
Okay, so it's completed?
Completed.
Okay. The professional signage is to be installed either on the building or in the window, and to include notice that services are by appointment only?
It is.
All exterior window and doorway trim on the first floor to be repainted by April 30.
It's not done yet. So, we have half of the building, I can show you pictures if you want, but not half. Only half of the last window for one side and the whole other side. We scraped everything two weeks ago, but with the rain, we can start it up to yesterday. So, we have almost Pritchard Street thoroughly painted already.
Okay. How long do you anticipate to complete?
I believe this week it's going to be done, because we don't expect it rain this week. I believe it's going to be done.
Okay, and then the only other thing was the review today. Is there anything else you wanted to say on your review before I go to questions?
No, no questions.
Okay. Mr. Reynolds, any questions for the petitioner? Mr. Chartrand, any questions?
Yeah, how's it going over there? You guys busy?
Oh, good. Oh, happy? We are busy and happy. Thank you for your patience, guys.
Yeah, everything's going well. That's good. That's it.
Mr. Byrne? Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I visited the site today, and I noticed that your contractor was out painting around the windows. Looked like you...
I'll be honest with you, I don't find a contractor.
Well, whoever it was, someone was painting.
But I have one of my guys painting, little by little, with patience, trying to make it nice.
Yeah, I want to comment, it was a tough job scraping all that paint off, and looks like you put a lot of effort into it, and I appreciate it. The part that was dry on Pritchard Street looked really much improved, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. McGlottson?
I'm good. He's done everything we've asked him. I wish him the best and success.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to make a motion that we don't need any more reviews on this project.
I would agree. I think that our ability to recall somebody for violation is sufficient. Would somebody like to make a motion, then, on this review?
I'll make the motion under ZBA 2022-32 to approve the review, and just to note that the condition, the final condition for the painting be satisfied, you know, within a short timeframe.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, the review is approved.
Thank you so much.
Please complete the painting, so we don't recall you.
You're going to see it. Michael is going to see it, he went by.
Good luck with your business, sir.
No problem, it's going to be done this week. Thank you so much.
Actually, it'll be Joe.
All right. The next matter is ZBA 2022-01. This is 47 School Street. This is the review of the special permit to convert a single family into a two-family for pre-existing non-conforming dwelling located in residential B District. Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
My address? Forty-seventh? Forty-seventh School Street.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, we are here to just check your review. At the last review we had, you had most of the items completed, I think a few were still remaining, and then you were waiting for the unitil inspection. Did that occur?
Correct.
At the last meeting, the outstanding items were that the value strad and railing should be matched more closely to the original prior to renovation. So, you brought an example, we said you need one that matches, and it's my understanding that you had those milled and installed?
Yeah, I take a picture, and I go to Maki, and she introduced one gentleman in man, so I order from him, so it's matched it up.
So, that's completed?
Yes.
The eaves were going to be repaired with trim that more closely matched the original trim rather than being covered and painted?
Yes.
Was that changed?
Yeah, it's changed.
Okay. And then I know that there had been a question about the height of the railing. Again, I received a call from the Building Commissioner and Inspector Morielli about this. It's my understanding that although it does not meet current code, it was at least as high as the prior railing, and that therefore, because the house is listed historically, that it's not a violation of the building code. Just to give that information to the board. it's not a violation of the building code. Just to give that information to the board.
Okay, so historic architecture overrules building code?
Because it was it's a listed property with the Massachusetts Historic Commission.
Okay.
If it's on the historic database, that may have some influence.
Thank you for that clarification.
Sure. Is there anything else you would like to say about the review?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are you ready? Do you have a buyer for the building already?
Actually, she was put on the market in four hours. It's sold. So right now she waiting for the buyer home inspection.
Okay. And is there anything else that you've that you know of that needs to be completed before you're complete with the project? Met all conditions, satisfied your inspections?
Yes, tomorrow I get the gas company come install and turn on the gas with my plumbing. So my plumbing will call final and then I get final.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So is there anyone here, any member of the public who wishes to speak on, for, or against this review? Is there anyone here virtually? If so, please raise your hand who wants to speak on, for, or against this review? Okay, seeing none, I am going to go to board members. Mr. Gallagher, I'm going to go to you first.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate the effort done on that on that railing. I know it wasn't easy and you got it done and it is almost exactly to what was. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There is something that I'm not so satisfied with and that is the fascia board up at the roof line. It looks like a different type of molding was added to the corner of the building and very different to what was. Would you agree?
I tried to correctly, but the gentleman he do the woodwork around here. The bottom molding he do is good job.
Right.
But the top molding he say he cannot do it. That's why I try to get the other molding to try to cover the metal.
Okay, my next question. Has the home inspection happened yet?
Not yet.
That may be an issue visually, you know, because it is a historic property and that's a totally different application that was applied over the old application. And the good news is is the board, the board that was originally there is not a complicated board to to copy. So that's all I have to say about that at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you.
Mr. McGlothlin, would you like to go?
Could I invite the applicant up to show them the photo that we're discussing? Do you have a second?
Sure.
As long as the photo will need to be emailed to.
Yes, I can do that. I can do that. So this is the trim piece that used to have metal and then you removed a metal or maybe just put this over it?
No, I removed a metal.
Okay, so there's still this piece left there and I think what the board is asking is that this profile, this piece of wood be carried over to here and then this piece be properly installed and then a piece that matches this go all the way to the end. And again, if you don't find this at a Home Depot.
No, they don't have it.
You just need to trace and have somebody mill a piece of it. It's not that difficult. This may be available at Mackey's, but you know, again, this is what we have asked to have completed and then that's your last bullet.
Okay.
Okay? That's what I figured.
That's the last thing you have to do. You've done a good job.
It's really not that hard to do.
I come to Mackey. They don't have it. They don't have it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they could recommend someone who could probably make an eighteen-inch strip that you need because it's not a lot and it would blend in quite nicely, easier than what that did because that's sort of applied onto the top of it.
I might stop by the gentleman he do the woodwork.
Mm-hmm.
His name Dan. So he always work with Mackey. So I stopped by with him and I told him he say his molding is he not sure he can do or not. But the auto molding he do it for me.
No. If he can't, somebody else can because it's really not a complicated piece, you know?
Any other questions?
Get it on the railings.
Thank you.
You did the railings. You can do that. The railings were tough and you did a great job on that.
Let me try probably go up there. I cut one piece.
Yep, that's all they're gonna need. Or take a good picture of it with dimensions or trace it.
I might cut one piece to match it.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
I think it would be difficult to do with the picture.
Yeah.
Because I think the actual measurements and profile are just best in person.
Trace or slice off a small piece and then they can match it.
They'll cut a knife to cut that wood perfectly.
I cut about six inches. Give to him see.
Yep.
Last time he say no, new red. But this time I might come and talk to you.
Good luck. I know you can do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else, Mr. McGlothlin?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Byrne?
No, I'm fine.
Mr. Chartrand?
Um, no questions.
Mr. Reynolds?
No, thank you.
Thank you all. And I just want to say, as we've said before, I think you've on the exterior of the property, I think you've done a great job with the renovation and we are very appreciative of the work and the time that you've put into this property. And it's a real benefit to maintaining the character of that particular house in the neighborhood. When do you have a closing date yet for the sale?
On the buyer, they say this twenty-four, May twenty-four.
Okay. What I'd like to do, our next meeting, so May twenty-fourth. Our next meeting is on June thirteenth and we don't have another prior meeting before then. Our next alternate date is on Thursday and nothing is going to be able to be done by Thursday. I would I'm going to ask the board whether it's inclined to require a further review before releasing the conditions. And because because that will have to be on June thirteenth, which will be after the supposed the scheduled closing date. It will push it out by about three weeks. I'm inclined, I think this is important to the board, to have the final review with that fascia board completed.
So my question, if I done that molding, I can take a picture and email to you that idea?
We can't act except at a meeting. And so it needs to be at the scheduled meeting that we that we approve it and then release the conditions as completed. So even though you may email a picture to all of us, which I suggest that you email a picture to the building department ahead of time so that we can just all say yes and let you sail through, it's still going to have to be at the June thirteenth meeting.
Okay, so any problem with her closing day?
So the closing, that's up to you and the buyer. The buyer may want to have this last condition released. I don't know. You'll need to talk to the buyer or your Realtor about what they want in order to close. But you are there's no restraint on you conveying the property before it's done, but the new buyer is going to have to come here if you do that. And I'm going to say right now that, you know, we've had some experience and I assume this is not going to be the case with you, sir, because you've been, you know, very good with this board, I think, in complying with the conditions. If there's a sale prior to our next meeting where hopefully all the work is done and we release the conditions, then the buyer needs to come. I would I would prefer that you come because you're the person we've been dealing with, but the buyer needs to come. I think that's enough discussion. I think we're all inclined to have a final release. So I am going to look for a motion from the board on a continuance of the review.
I'll make a motion on ZBA twenty twenty-two dash zero one for the property at forty-seventh School Street for a continuance until June thirteenth.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I should say aye, I'm in favor. I am going to I'm going to ask that we hear this as early as possible in the in the meeting to make sure that you are released as soon as possible. Thank you again for coming and all the work that you've done on the property, sir. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next matter we're calling is ZBA twenty twenty-three dash fourteen. This is sixteen Atlantic Ave, Ray Ho. This is an application for a special permit under section one eighty-one point seven eight-two of the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance to conduct a home occupation business as a hair salon, having clients visiting the property pursuant to section one eighty-one point nine four located in residential B. Welcome to the meeting. If you can each please state your name and address for the minutes.
Ray Huff, sixteen Atlantic Avenue, Pittsburgh.
Okay, thank you.
Ryan Huff, sixteen Atlantic Avenue.
Thank you. And it's Huff.
Yeah.
Sorry for the mispronunciation. For this matter, I'm going to turn to Mr. Gallagher. Please lead us in the questioning, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Huff. I'm wondering if you can tell us a little bit about your project to start with.
Okay, do you want to talk first? It's a home salon for she's been a hairdresser for thirty years and we've been married for two and bought a property here, sixteen Atlantic Avenue, and been there for a year. And we have a four-season room that is a perfect place for a salon. And we do not intend to have any more than one person per day there and it would be by appointment only.
Okay.
And it's mostly just to keep busy.
Okay.
There would only be one piece of signage out on the fence area. This would be what we would place out there until we got a sufficient amount of clients. This then this could be removed. There would be another no altered, nothing altered on the outside of that property. We have ample parking. If we only have one person per day, we have plenty of parking. We have a hundred and fourteen.
I dare you to try and stop.
We have a hundred and fourteen-foot-long driveway with a twenty-six-hundred-square-foot footage. You could easily have four cars to be able to park in and out of there. We never anticipate to have more than one person there per day and.
I've done hair since I was eighteen and I am fifty. I've owned my own salon for fifteen, sixteen years of that and lived in Georgia. I just don't have, I mean, I do want to do the salon. I just don't have the desire to do it at the level I did it at previously. So wanted to do a little work from home and just trying to get it legal.
Yeah, we were just trying to do the right thing and get everything copacetic with the town and we think we could add some, you know, benefit to the community in our area. It's a beautiful area and I don't feel like we're taking away from the facade or anything about the neighborhood. Think we would actually be adding to it. So.
The sign would really, at this present moment, when we put the sign up, it would just to be let to let people know you've arrived at the right spot.
Yeah, right.
I don't know if I'll actually put up a salon sign in the future or not. I just got to see how it how it goes.
Okay. And how would the prospective clients be entering the area that you would be performing the service?
We have two ways of entry, one along the sidewalk and a walkway with a exterior door for entry and exit. We can also have them come through the front or to the the main side entrance as well. They're more than welcome to come in.
Yeah, we don't honestly, just whichever is.
There's three, three entryways.
Okay, depending on inclement, whether I'm thinking that, you know, you'd like them to go through that very elegant lobby that you have.
Yeah.
Your house is absolutely beautiful, sir.
Thank you.
And hours of operation?
Well, I'm imagining probably like eight, nine in the morning till six, seven. I don't plan on working.
Nine to five would be better.
Okay, nine to five. I mean, I I want to do this. I just don't have the desire to be stacked person to person through the day. So my guess is late would cut off at seven, maybe sooner than seven. You know, if you start a color at five, be done by seven.
Okay. So are you looking at doing one client a day or one client at a time?
One per day.
I'm looking at one at a time. He was saying one a day, but it depends on how busy I get and people's schedule. So it might be one a day, it might be two or three on one day and none the next.
Sure.
It just depends on what clientele I get and meeting their needs. I don't plan to work weekends because we observe Sabbath and we just want that time together, so.
Right.
It wouldn't be on the weekend.
And are you by appointment only?
Plan to be by appointment only because I don't know anybody. It kind of scares me when people just show up. So yes.
So you're going to be working to build up a clientele over time, I would imagine?
Yes.
Yep.
Well, I don't, yeah, I have to get out in the community somewhat and and meet people. So yes.
Okay. I don't have any more questions, but I'm sure the board may. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. I have a few questions before we move to public comment. How many square feet are involved in the salon use? How many square feet of the interior building?
Two hundred ninety-four.
Okay, thank you. And in addition to the driveway, you also have a three-car garage and that's where your personal parking is going to be?
Correct. I have a three-car garage, yes.
All right. And do you plan on having any employees?
I'm sorry?
Any employees?
No.
No.
Any employees?
I've done that.
Okay, good. All right, at this point in time, I am going to open this up for public comment. I believe that we have one person virtually who is interested in speaking. So I am allowing you to speak. Can you please state your name and address for the minutes, ma'am?
Yes, I'm Joan McWilliams. My address fifteen Atlantic Ave, directly across from the house.
Okay, so direct to butter. Can you please, you're welcome to make a brief statement on this application.
So I do have, I do have a few questions and I first want to state, you know, I'm not trying to take anybody's business away from them, their livelihood, but I just want to just, I just want to solidify some answers and I want to make sure that I'm understanding and hearing correctly. The first, I have, I have maybe three or four questions. The first question is, you're saying that it's only going to be you as the sole hairdresser there. You have no interest in having any more working for you, coming in, adding another chair or working from your chair or whatever. It's only going to be. It's only going to be solely for you, one person?
That's correct. It's a one-chair salon, it's not, there's not even room for two chairs, and that's just not my desire. I just want to do what I've always done, but as far as running a business from the perspective of that I used to run a business, I actually used to own a salon, like a business, but this is within the, within my home, so no.
Okay.
The salon honestly wouldn't house it anyway. It's, it's a small room, it's less than 300 square feet, and there's one salon chair in there that two of the council members have come and seen. There's, there's not room for any more than that, and like I said, it's our home, no. We are absolutely not.
And I do understand that, yep. So my next question was, and you did speak to this, you know, my big concern, another big concern of mine was where will the parking be? So you are definitely planning on telling your client, clients, to be parking in your driveway as there is ample room there for them?
Absolutely.
Yes, we can tell them to park in the driveway. We have people park in front of our house all the time. That is not us, never has been us.
It's not a clean look, is it? It's not a clean look, and that was a very big concern of mine because, as we all know, we've spoken about it, that our part of the street is so tight with parking that it's difficult at best sometimes to get two cars down the road when there are people parked in the, on the road.
Agreed.
And it actually is a hazard. It's actually a hazard. So I'm encouraged that you're, you know, that you are going to be using your driveway and not the road for this. So that's another good, you know, nice response to that. My third is the signage. So I do, I do have a question of that because you said you might put it up for a little bit at first and you might take it away a little bit. You're just trying to kind of get clients. So I've been in the neighborhood for many years, and I, gosh, I, you know, go back to when the Rice's owned that building. He was a doctor, and he was kind of retiring out his business. He had a really big practice in town.
Right.
He was retiring out his business, and he saw, as you're saying, just a few clients a day, and that was it. He didn't see more than that. They outparked in his driveway whenever they came. People, he did not change the integrity of the neighborhood whatsoever. Things looked clean, they were neat, and he never put a sign out, and he just knew, like, people just knew this is where he was.
The sign, go ahead.
So my question is, like, I get, I get nervous when we start putting signs out because, you know, it does attract people, and I'm not trying to say I want to detract from your business, but it does attract people, more people, and then more people might want to say, hey, I want to open up a salon in my house too. So it's just kind of, to me, like, less is more, and I kind of would, you know, the signage, I know you're trying to, I know what you're trying to do, and I appreciate that, Ray. It's just kind of a, it's just kind of something that is just like, does it really, is it necessary right now if you're trying to attract maybe one, a customer a day?
So do you have a brief response to that question about the signage?
Yeah, the signage is, I mean, like I said, this is the actual one that we, we could change this as well, but it would just be in the beginning until we had a few of the clientele and they got comfortable with coming in, it would just, and we may not even have to do it, is, is put it on the entrance gate during the hours, and it can be removed. It would not be a perpendicular sign in the yard.
Okay, yep.
No, it would not be, like, we're extremely neat and tidy as well.
We don't want what you're saying either.
We don't want that either.
Yeah, so it would not be in the form of a campaign sign which is stuck in the lawn and then removed later.
That's correct.
It would be hung.
If I may.
Yes.
So I'm a building inspector. I think you should have a sign, and I'll tell you why, because if you don't, I've recently had an enforcement issue with someone who didn't, and then sometimes the cars park in the neighbor's driveway, and that drove the complaint that got me there because they aren't, didn't do what you guys are doing. They were on Google, so you could find them, but we had neighbors complaining that without the sign, they didn't know, they get lost, you know?
So Ms. McWilliams, I'm going to ask that you complete your comment to the board. Ma'am?
I'm sorry.
Can you complete your comment to the board? Thank you.
Did you want me to speak?
I didn't hear you.
Yeah, I would like you to wrap up your comments.
Yep, so I would just like to speak to that. If, if you're owning the business as they're saying, and they're going to be telling, you know, client X that they're going to be coming to 16 Atlantic Ave, you know, they're going to be looking for a street number, they're going to GPS it if they don't know her, or they don't know the street or the number. They're not going to park in the, yeah, and she'll just tell them that they need to park in the driveway.
Yes, and we can make parking corrections as fit. I mean, we'd never have them out on front, and I think, you know, it just takes them one time just to come there. And like I said, once, once we get, you know, enough people established, they're going to know where it is, we won't even need the sign.
Okay.
She doesn't want to have an additional, so many additional customers, it's going to be a work-from-home, very small, very bespoke customer experience, and, you know, very few people would come in there.
Okay. Ms. McWilliams, thank you for your comment. I am going to ask whether there is any person here present in the building who would like to make a comment on for or against this petition? And any other person available virtually who would like to make a comment on for or against this petition? Seeing none in either case, I am going to see if the board has any questions for the petitioners. Mr. Reynolds, any questions?
No, not at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chartrand, any questions?
Not much. Like I said, I had a case recently where people were confused as to where to go, but that being said, other than that, I've been in your house when they repaired all of the termite damage. It was rather substantial in the basement, and they did a good job, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Byrne, any questions?
This is one of the premier communities within Pittsburgh, and on one of the conditions at the bottom, the last one will probably be not to operate as a nuisance, which means if your clients get their cars parked in the street or do not park where they're supposed to be, and the neighborhood goes up in riots, we're going to have to pull your permit. So as long as you understand that, no problem whatsoever with me.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Gallagher, any more questions?
I do not have any additional questions.
Okay. And Mr. McLaughlin, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. At this point in time, then, I am going to close the public hearing and we'll move to deliberation. Mr. Gallagher, since you led us in questioning.
Yes.
Any comments on the allowance of this permit or any conditions?
Well, I will say this, that the owners were gracious enough to show me the site, and some comments I will make is that the house is absolutely elegant inside and meticulously cleaned. They had brought me to the space. The space was bright, freshly painted, a nice stone floor. I seem to recall when Dr. Rice ran his practice out of that, and I believe it was the same space. I think it's, it's a great place for someone to go and have their hair cut, beautiful surroundings, and I'm sure with 30 years in the business that Ray is very experienced at what she does, so I, I look at it as it being a benefit to the community.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Mr. McLaughlin, any comments for deliberation or conditions?
Thank you. No, I think, you know, as discussed, there was hours of operation, I think we're nine to five, no weekends, clients park in the driveway, not a real fan of having the sign in a residential neighborhood, so maybe if it's going to be, you know, temporary as things get up and going, right, everybody GPS's to go somewhere today, so getting to that destination and once you have a repeat clientele, but, you know, open for comment amongst the board on that.
Mr. Reynolds?
I agree with Mr. McLaughlin.
Okay. Mr. Chartrand?
Nothing further.
Okay. And Mr. Byrne, any deliberation or comments? Okay. For me, I have a little concern about the sign as well. It's, it's made as a temporary lawn sign, so right now it looks like that, and I do like the idea of putting it out and then taking it back in, however, when, when they are not in operation. The signage has to comply with the ordinance, so that's something that you should check in with the building department on size, but I am concerned about people driving to the neighborhood not knowing where you are and having some disturbance to other neighbors looking for you. So I think, you know, what I imagine to be a good compromise perhaps between these would be a glass encasing that the sign is inserted to, so it looks a little more professional because a couple rainy days and that's going to be toast, or at least it's going to look a little more dragly. But I am also open to comment from other board members on the sign issue.
Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm.
Just a reflection on the sign is that I think that there's an element of safety or direction that a sign affords on a property with multiple entrances. I think we heard the applicant state that there's a preference that traffic would be directed towards one entrance versus another, and I would suggest that if the sign could act in a way that would provide the homeowners their privacy by directing traffic towards a door and in some manner not be obtrusive like I might imagine a political sign to be, then I think that might be a nice compromise of use and, quite frankly, you know, safety. So I just wanted to add that element of comment.
Thank you. On this particular property, as I recall, there's a fence on the left through which you enter in order to gain entrance to the salon.
So if, I guess my general point there would be that if the sign could act in concert with the expected foot traffic, that would make some sense to me.
Okay.
And I know that that's a common sense point, but stated in the negative, don't want a sign parked on the front yard to detract from the general nature of that terrific neighborhood.
Okay, thank you very much for the excellent suggestion. So as I am thinking about the potential allowance, this is, as I think I've said to you in person, one of the, one of the best properties in the city. You've, you've chosen an excellent, an excellent property to buy, and I also thought that the finishing on the interior of the salon was done very well, and look forward to your ownership as preserving the value of the property and contributing to the quality of the neighborhood. Given that, the conditions I would consider are as follows. Number one, that you be limited to one client at a time. Number two, that there be no employees. Number three, that there would be no nail services offered at the salon, and that is because of an odor generation issue.
Madam Chair, when you're ready, tell me when you're ready. I have a comment about your proposal.
Number four, that the hours of operation be between Monday through Friday, nine to five. Number five?
I think I might actually like to revisit, perhaps it was number two or three. One client at a time, in my opinion, might be better served as not to operate as a nuisance, meaning if Ray, I'm saying Ray, I don't know you, but I can't pronounce your last name, so please understand why I'm saying that. In her, in her professional capacity, thought that two clients was manageable and there was parking, why would we say only one? A thought from me to you.
I can contemplate that there might be a transition period between clients as well, where we have one person waiting. I would say that there's certainly two parking spaces available in the driveway, given that the three in the garage satisfy, so I'd be willing to modify that to no more than two customers.
I can see another little problem. Let's say she has a friend who was also a hairdresser, and she gets COVID.
Mm-hmm.
She can't work, and she's got all these people lined up for a wedding. Now, that's not going to be an employee, but somebody could come in and take her place for a little while, so if there was another person cutting hair.
I, I think the employee, I do understand, but I think the employee issue is going to, it's going to add a constant traffic, and I, I, you know, I don't.
I didn't, not a permanent employee, a permanent, but if she has to come to us and say, you know, you have me down as only one, I'm not having any employee, and I'm going to be sick, and I'm not going to be able to, she won't be able to do that. So, you know, we should make some kind type of caveat in there where she can have somebody replace her.
Can you come up with a formulation?
Home occupation.
Because I, I think that's a difficult, difficult accommodation to write.
Everybody cuts hair a little bit differently.
It's a home occupation.
I'll speak homely for my wife.
I was just thinking about it, never mind.
People are very picky about cutting hair.
We can certainly, I, the employees I would like to leave, but thinking of a different phraseology, we could use one, no more than one service chair. No more than one service chair might be more appropriate than no more than one customer, so.
Oh, would you say number one again?
Mm-hmm. All right, if we're not going to revisit anything else.
Did you, did you have the nuisance in there?
We haven't finished the conditions yet. Customers to park in driveway. Signage to comply with the zoning ordinance, and to be located near the entrance and shall not be located within 15 feet of the street. And then finally, not to operate as a public nuisance.
Hours of operation?
Hours of operation, we got Monday through Friday, nine to.
Can we say seven? The only reason I say seven is some people don't get off till five. By the time they, five's cutting it really, you would have to start somebody even before school lets out for colors.
Okay, nine to seven. Anyone have any other?
Weekends, yes, no?
I don't plan to do weekends.
Is the sign going to be a permanent thing or temporary during startup?
We could add signed, I, we're not requiring them to put up a sign, we are limiting where they can put up a sign.
I'd like to put a condition in on, on sign size. Because I think according to the ordinance, might be able to be up to eight square feet in a residential neighborhood.
Should be smaller.
It's a historic neighborhood, and I'm sure they appreciate that, right? They bought the house.
I think the real estate signs end up being six.
Six square feet?
Yeah, I mean personally, I still think that's too large. You know, unless it's going to just go up during hours of operation, but...
Is that three by two? Is that a three by two?
Four, what is it?
Three by two.
Three by two.
Right.
Three by two.
Yeah, that's a pretty standard size, I think, was what, it's in the zoning bylaw. Mike is right. It's definitely in there because those signs are all the same size. You know, as far as real estate, political, they're usually about that size. Probably have to pay a lot more to get a weird size.
So if we said no larger than six square feet? I think that's a three by two sign? No?
I'm looking for literally an identification marker. All that advertising doesn't really need to be there, because people aren't going to drive by and call. The letters at the bottom, you can't, I think we just need a small sign that says Atlantic Salon, so I know I'm at my destination. You know, just to be respectful for the neighborhood and the butters.
We can do that.
That's it. Not just something that says, here it is, I'm here.
You've arrived.
I have arrived.
Right. We have to be careful about not regulating the content of the sign.
Not regulating the content, the size.
Yeah. So if that size is what you're looking for, would you say that's three square feet? Can you give us a measurement that we can put in?
Yeah, one by two, one by three.
One by three.
Something like that, yeah.
All right.
Bigger than one.
Yeah.
It's one and a half by three.
Yeah, one by three.
All right. Then let's modify that.
It's not a business neighborhood, it's a residential neighborhood, and we just need a marker for people to know where they are, you know? She will be successful.
Big enough to be noticed when people are looking for the salon?
Yeah, that's it.
All right. I'm looking for a motion, unless there are any further deliberations on conditions.
Okay, I'll make that motion under ZBA 2023-14 to approve the special permit as requested for 16 Atlantic Ave with the conditions as discussed. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, your special permit is granted. Good luck with your business. I hope everything goes very well for you.
Thank you.
All right.
No review?
No. No review. No.
Oh, so...
I would rather a recall if we needed to.
Well, let's amend it now.
I would rather a recall, I don't, so if you want to make a motion, that is up to you. I am not in favor of review on that matter.
On this case?
On that past case, yes.
Sunset clause, was that discussed?
Sunset clause was not discussed. Would you like to make a motion to amend to add a condition that there be a sunset clause?
I would like to make a motion to add that, please.
Do I have a second on that motion to amend?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Calling the next matter is ZBA 2023-15, 348 Elm Street, Nadell Antonio. This is a request for a special permit under Section 181.332 of the zoning ordinance to reinstate a vacant or abandoned non-conforming mixed-use structure, changing the use to another non-conforming less detrimental use as a duplex pursuant to Section 181.94, located in residential C. Is the petitioner here on this matter? I believe the petitioner is here virtually. Thank you, Ms. Mata. Sir, I am going to allow you to talk. Please state your name and address for the minutes.
Hello, my name is Nadell Antonio, and my address is 21 Walnut Street, Pittsburgh.
Thank you, sir. Can you give a very brief overview of what your special permit request is for?
Will do. So that building over at 348 Elm Street, commercial, used to be a sauna.
Sir, we're having trouble hearing you. Could you move closer to the microphone or speak up?
Roger, can you hear me now?
Not very well.
All right, one second.
There we go.
There we go.
There we go. Thank you. Go ahead.
Wonderful. So 348 Elm Street is a commercial building, abandoned or vacant, like you said, when I bought the building, people were working out of it as a wood shop. Recently, with this snow, the roof collapsed. Building Department wanted me to put a fence around it for safety, which we did. We currently bought a parking lot nearby, I want to say two lots next door, to make four parking spots, so we can make this property a two-family condo, left and right. That's pretty much it. Right now, we haven't demoed the building, because I'm currently waiting to see if there's any asbestos before we do any demoing. I know from the outside it looks good, but I checked the inside, it should not go nowhere. Right now, once I have the green light, that there's no asbestos, I'm going to go back to the building department, give them the letter and say that, and I can hopefully tear it down until we find out what we're going to do after the meeting.
How many, this is a duplex, you said?
That is correct. It'll be a left and right condo.
How many beds, when you say condominium, are you planning on selling the units or renting them?
I'm going to be renting them. I'll usually keep my buildings and I rent them.
Are you going to be forming a condominium association?
I am not. So it'll be, it's like a two-family. I don't know why I'm calling it a condo. The style is going to be like a left and right. It won't be like an up and down.
And how many bedrooms and bathrooms per unit?
There'll be three and two. I don't have a print right in front of me. I know I forward that to you guys, but it could be three and three or three and two in each unit.
Your application also mentions that on 334 Elm Street, you're going to use it for parking and build a small home. Is that correct?
Not anymore. I talked through the commissioner, and we're just going to keep it parking. There's not enough space there to build the house. There used to be a house there, so we're just going to keep a spare parking. That way we have area for the snowmen, and if needed, we have an area to put the trash around there or a bigger trash can. We're not sure yet, but we're going to have more space there that way we don't have to build the house there. So we're not doing that. Just a two-family, that's it.
The lot that you purchased for parking has a substantial retaining wall both in front of it and behind it. It's elevated from the street, and you would need a curb cut in order to use it for parking. Have you had, I know that you just recently forwarded a plan to the building department.
There is actually a curb cut already there from before, because there used to be a house there, and they used to have parking. So there is a curb cut there. We are going to make it a little bigger. That way we have entryways for more cars to go in and out, to make it easier.
What are you going to...
But there is currently there.
What are you going to do about the, you're going to have to break through the retaining wall, right?
No, not at all. It's just a curb in front.
I...
You see the plan that we, yeah, sorry.
So if that's the case, I clearly did not look at the right property because there's an elevation of about three feet for the retaining wall.
Yeah, that is correct. We're taking that up. That is the work I cut there, yeah, sorry.
Thank you. Are you utilizing, just looking, trying to look at this plan, are you utilizing an easement to access that 334 Elm Street lot? Or is it directly through the lot? It's just...
For the parking or the house?
For the parking.
It's right in front of, I'm sure I understand the question, the easement.
So I'm just asking, are you just using the lot with the regular square boundary lines or using an easement to get onto that parking lot?
Nope, just the regular square boundary line.
Okay.
We were there.
So you've submitted a number of building plans for the two-family. Can you tell me what's going to be involved? Are you demoing the entire thing? Are you rebuilding? Because the structure certainly looks like it's had better days. Let me put it that way.
That is correct. And thank God, however it was astounding before, it's all concrete inside installed. So thank God that FY didn't collapse. There's soft solid concrete inside. Just the little front part of the roof collapsed, and it collapsed the front wall. My goal is to probably demo all four walls and get started fresh, keeping the same same foundation. That would be ideal. Depends how they go in the meeting. I think I'm allowed to build the same infrastructure, how it was before, which I'm not happy with the way it looked. It kind of looked ugly. So if I can just tear down the walls, and I can build new with the same foundation, using the same footprint, that would be ideal. Please.
All right. What's your timeline for completion of this project?
So unfortunately, I have other projects, and I wasn't ready to start this yet until the roof happened. If I can get a year and a half or two-year max, that'll be great. That way I can finish my other projects and not have to move Monday around from the other projects to make this work. But my goal will be to at least demo the wall. That way it's safe for everybody. That would be my first thing, that priority. Once I know that there is no asbestos there, I'm going to demo the wall, but I probably won't schedule a project for another. I'll be honest, maybe in a year, if I can.
Do you have a funding source ready for the completion of the project?
I don't have it all together yet. I mean, like I said, I do have funding for other properties that I don't want to move. If I have an emergency, for example, which I am now, which I'm going to demo it, I have funds available for that, no problem. But once, within my year, I should be able to start building that right up. That way I'm under my two-year mark.
And can you remind me what the address is on your other project?
Marshall Street.
Marshall Street, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
Eighty-three, eighty-five, right.
Yep, and forty-one, do you know?
How's Marshall Street going?
Marshall Street, like last week that we went to, he wanted me to go out there and check out the front wall with the building inspected, which we did. If I'm not mistaken, I think he called you or emailed you, letting him know that he was okay with the way the front was.
Yep.
And we should be starting with that project by this month. That's why I want to take away, I don't want to take, sorry, I don't want, I want to demo the walls here from 348. That way nothing collapsed. So I forbid, I want to be able to at least take the walls down, make sure I can rebuild in a year, and I can finish Marshall Street.
Are you planning to retain this property or to sell it after completion of the project?
I am keeping it. Yep, I had it for a long time now. I've been waiting for the whole time to start working.
I am going to take a moment to read a comment from the departments. This is the comment from the Board of the Health, which is that the roof collapsed and the structure is compromised, as you said during your presentation. Is there anything else, Mr. Antonio, you'd like to say before I move on to public comment?
No, pretty much. When we met there with the building department, they had me cut the electricity and cut the gas and cut the water. That way everything is already closed up. There's no potential of anything leaking or anything happening.
Okay.
But we got that sorted up right away, once we knew we had that problem with the snow.
All right. Thank you, sir.
No, thank you for your time.
Okay. Is there any person present in the building who would like to make a comment on, for, or against this petition? Is there any person virtually who would like to make a comment on, for, or against this petition? Seeing none in person or virtually, I am going to move on to board questions. So, Mr. Antonio, you remain on speaker, and if you can answer each board member's questions as they're presented to you. Mr. Reynolds?
Okay, will do.
No questions.
No questions. Mr. Gallagher, any questions?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. You mentioned that there's an abatement issue with having some asbestos removed from the structure that is going to be demolished. Is that correct?
We don't know if there is. We, the building department wanted me to get everything tested in there, so right now we're in the process of doing it. Let's hope to go there. No, like I said, it's all concrete from where it was the sound, sounder before. So it's all concrete structure, but we want to be safe. So right now we're in the process of getting air back from the asbestos company, and let us know if they found anything.
Okay, so when you get the results of that abatement, when do you plan on having the existing structure that's quite compromised demolished and removed?
So the next step, let's see, if there's no asbestos, I can do it right away once I get the building permit. If there is asbestos, I'll have to see how much it is and how long it'll take them to take the asbestos out, which I also have to probably get a building permit for. So they would know, I mean, I'm ready to do it right away, at least demo the building down, onto the foundation. Not building yet, just at least demo it, it'll stay.
Do you know how long it's been since the roof has collapsed?
I want to say maybe two months, I think, whenever we had the bad small storm after over and over and over.
Yep, so probably back in March. I noticed the walls are, I noticed the exterior walls are bowing on the building as well, and I appreciate the fact that you have gating around the building.
Oh, yeah, definitely. We went inside and put temporary two-by-fours. That way it doesn't go any forward or go anywhere, you know?
Okay. Well, the building's wide open and it is exposed to the elements, so I would think that time would be of the essence to have it demolished, but I have no...
I agree.
Yeah, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin, do you want to wait?
No, I'd like to recommend a continuance. Doesn't seem like this project is going to have any rights anytime soon. I'd like to really put in perspective the parking lot that was discussed, maybe even set up a site visit with the applicant to really get my arms around this project. In light of time, I just thought I would throw that out there now. I'm not really ready to make a decision on this. I don't, and I could be totally wrong, but I don't see any setback dimensions on the plan. Don't know enough about the parking plan, so I'd like to see some holes filled in. I certainly hope the building department is going to make sure that this building gets taken down and it doesn't sit there for six months in that condition, because certainly is unsafe. It looks like in 2010, the building department deemed it unsafe as well. But I'm optimistic this would be a good project.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin.
Thank you.
In light of that, Mr. Shartren, did you want to either ask questions or highlight some questions that would need to be answered by the applicant?
No, not really. Like Mike said, I think that there's some other things that they may need in order to build a structure like that. But, you know, if he's got other projects and he's got time, then I don't see why we're going to do a continuance for now, so he can put a little bit more together. Overall, I like the project. I've seen that building a bunch. It's always been a weird building, put it that way. So, and I think that a duplex would fit with the character. It's permitted to use. But we got some questions still, and Nadell's got some work to do.
Okay. Mr. Burns, would you like to make any comment or ask for any information to be supplied? I think my microphone needs adjustment. And Mr. Reynolds here, all set. All right. I am going to, I think that as our usual, an informal site visit would be fine. I am going to, I, I think that as our usual, an informal site visit would be fine. With Mr. Antonio, we would make an arrangement through the building department for you to have the property available for board members to visit separately. And so what you would need to do is offer some, a few dates and times where the property could be available to board members through Ms. Mata, and she will set the dates for that. I myself, I, this is a project that I don't think is, is ripe yet for approval, but I do look forward to finding out information about the project and looking at it on, on the ground. The existing building, I certainly would like to see replaced, but it does go out to pretty much the entire boundary lines, so when I look at this on a site visit, that's one of the concerns that I have. I am going to look for a continuance on this matter, and I think at, at the earliest July would be an appropriate continuance date to allow you to have the site visit, get some feedback from board members individually, and come back to us with some responses to that, that we can look at.
Wonderful. Yes, I, I am happy with that. The only problem is, let's say, if I get the asbestos, the asbestos guy says there's no asbestos, can I get the building department so I can demo that ASAP, or do you want me to wait till today?
I, I don't, I, I'm certainly not the building department, but I don't believe, I don't believe there's any prohibition on you demoing the building.
I just don't, I don't want a problem where I do demo the building and now I'm like, oh yeah, well you demoed the building, somehow you can't build what you want on it, or something smaller. If I can at least build whatever was there from before, I'm, I don't want to leave a building up, because I don't feel like it's safe.
I would direct that comment to Mr. Barbadoro, but-
Okay.
You, you also need special permits and possibly variants to do this, so I don't think it's gonna make too much of a difference, but talk to Mark.
All right, perfect. If I get a green light by next week, I'm, I'm gonna take that down, you know? I don't want to wait.
Yeah, I think it's a safety concern, so I mean, having it on the ground is gonna be a better deal.
So there's a time limit for reconstruction of a building, but you already have an abandoned building and you've already submitted a special permit to attempt to rehabilitate it? So I, I don't personally see that you have a time limit issue, but I would certainly confirm that with Mr. Barbadoro. This board, I think, would welcome the demoing of that building.
All right, perfect. Yeah, I think it's two years, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep.
But I'll double check.
So do I have a motion for a continuance on this matter, please?
Make the motion on the ZBA twenty twenty-three dash fifteen for the property at three forty-eight Elm Street for continuance until July eleventh.
Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? We are continuing to July eleventh. Please communicate with Ms. Mata on the site visit, and thank you, sir.
Will do. Thank you, have a good night. Thank you for your help, guys. Bye-bye.
All right. Calling the next matter, which is ZBA twenty twenty-three dash sixteen, this is seventy-two Glen Ave. This is an application by Bridget Siciliano for a special permit under section one eighty-one point seven eight-two of the Fitchburg zoning ordinance to conduct a home occupation business as a single-table massage service, having clients visiting the property pursuant to section one eighty-one point nine-four located in the residential B district. Ah, you are already here.
I am here.
So please state your name and address for the minutes.
Bridget Siciliano, seventy-two Glen Avenue, Fitchburg, Massachusetts.
Very good. And can you tell us a little bit about your application, about what you want to do?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a recent graduate of Bancroft School of Massage Therapy, I graduated in February, and I am an ATM, I have a license and all that to conduct a massage therapy business. I want to operate a one, a single-table massage therapy, massage business, servicing one to two clients a day, possibly two to three times a week. Hours of operation would be between ten AM and six PM. And most of my clients that I'm serving now are just word of mouth. I don't plan on having any signage up there, most, like I said, most of my clients will be word of mouth, and little, little, little to no advertising.
How much room within the structure is gonna be devoted to the massage area, the service area?
I would say maybe like about forty, forty-five to fifty feet is gonna be less, a small area, just like a small, single-room area.
And are your hours of operation Monday through Friday, or weekends as well?
No weekends, and it's probably gonna be Monday, Wednesday, Friday, like three days, three days out of the week.
The parking, this is a single-family home, right?
Yes.
Yep. So the parking requirements are two spaces for the single-family home and one space from your description of the square footage, because it's one space for every three hundred square feet used. Do you have the ability to provide off-street parking?
Absolutely, yes. We do.
So you haven't submitted a parking plan to us, can you describe the dimensions of the driveway?
I want to say it's about maybe forty to fifty feet long. It's, it holds two cars, two cars, my husband parks on the side, and there's one, there's space for one car in the front and one car behind, so it'll be most, one car parking is available.
Okay. So, so the driveway is two cars in size, and your husband parks on the street by the side?
No, no, he parks on the draw, on the side, like, we have like the yard, and then we have the long driveway, and then there's a, a offside on the side where he parks. He parks off, doesn't park in the driveway, but he parks on the offside.
Okay. And how long have you been operating up until now?
Oh, I just graduated in February, so most of my clients are family, friends, things like that, so I haven't really opened up to the public and operated yet.
And you said no signage?
No.
All right. I'm going to, do you have any other comments before I open up to members of the public for comment?
No, I don't have any comments. I just know that I'm excited about trying to start my business, it's my, my first time, and I'm just excited to try and get my business going.
All right. I'm going to ask, is there any member of the public here today in the building who would like to make a comment on, for, or against this petition? Is there any person virtually who would like to make a comment on, for, or against this petition? Seeing none in either case, and having no comment from the Board of Health, I am going to move forward to any board questions for you. Mr. Reynolds?
No questions.
Okay. Mr. Shatren?
Sure. So, so do you have an extra room that you're gonna dedicate to this, or how are you going to arrange it inside the home?
Well, I, there's actually two bedrooms and the living room, so it's probably gonna be in the living room area, just because my husband and myself live there and we have two bedrooms, and it's gonna be in the living room area, and there is an entrance way to come up into the living room, there's an entrance way in the kitchen, and we also have a basement. In, in the future, I plan on taking my business down to the basement, because I'm in the process of fixing the basement up and renovating the basement, so I can move my practice downstairs, but in the meantime, I just will be operating in the living room area of the, of the house.
How accessible? Is it low to the ground, or, or, you know, if a person's with mobility issues, will you be able to service them there?
Absolutely. We have a, actually, have the houses handicapped accessible.
Okay, excellent. And have some, I have some experience with massage at home. My understanding is that the board that licenses you also will look at the space as well. That's my recollection of it, and that's probably why the Board of Health didn't comment, because they took it from them and gave it to the massage board. But, so, so as far as like inspections, there will be little to none from the city.
State.
Yeah, that's, that's regulated by the state, but outside of that, I don't really see too much. I, I seen the picture online of what you're talking about, about the parking on the side there, so that looks sufficient, and I have nothing further.
Okay. Mr. Burns, any questions?
No, Michael and I just did the place, and it was just fine, there's enough parking spaces, and I hope she makes a go of it.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Mrs. Siciliano was gracious enough to show me the space, and I feel it was adequate. There was certainly a, a nice sturdy handicap ramp leading to the area in which she's going to be conducting the massages. There appeared to be plenty of parking, well, adequate parking for the clients that she's talking about having. I believe it's by appointment correctly, and, and only one person waiting at a time, so-
It's gonna be like a space of two to three hours in between.
Right. So I think your parking is adequate, and that's all I have to add, and thank you for spending the time with me to show me the property. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin?
No questions.
Okay. I have one further question. Do you have any plan to have an employee at the property?
No, no, this is gonna be like my retirement, my retirement career.
Your retirement job?
My, exactly.
Okay. All right. Unless you have anything further to add, I'm going to move us to deliberations.
I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. All right. I'll open it up to any board member who would like to make a comment on the allowance of this petition or the conditions to be imposed.
Take a stab at that. Thank you, Madam Chair. Starting deliberation process, you know, under one eighty-one, seven eighty-two, we also have to meet criteria under one eighty-one, seven eighty-one, so I think we're there. And, you know, moving to seven eighty-two, again, it looks like we're gonna fall and meet that criteria. Like to talk about conditions?
Yes.
Conditions would be no signage, business hours of operation would be Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, eight to six, did I get that right? Thank you. Customer visits by appointment, closed on weekends, no employees, and just like to add in our typical sunset clause and maybe a one-year review.
Public nuisance?
Sure. Always a good thing.
I'm gonna say that I took a drive by the property, and I think the front could use a little cleanup. There's a lot of, there's a lot of items in the front yard.
Any recommendations?
I, you know, I, I would, I would say that this is your home, but it's also a business, and generally that presenting a clear means of entrance-
Okay.
-without obstruction, particularly around the ramp, I think is going to be beneficial to the property and to the clients who are entering it. And the sunset clause. Any other conditions to be offered by a board member?
That's the neat and tidy condition.
All right.
We want you to be successful.
But I have like, so the decorative, because when you speak about the ramp, I have like decorative things around the ramp, you say that it's too cluttered, it looks too cluttered is what you're saying?
So I, I'm, a lot of this is, of course, personal preference, and different people have different personal preferences. When I went by the front of the home, the front yard looked like it contained a lot of things that were-
Extraneous.
Yes, yes.
Of what?
That were, that were extraneous, that, that there was a lot of clutter there, that there were a lot of things in the front yard.
Okay.
And I, I, I'm gonna say an appearance that's a little more consonant to the rest of the neighborhood might be appropriate. I realize that you have a handicapped accessible ramp there, and that makes your property a little different from everybody else's, and people do different things with those ramps. Right, I understand that.
I was very opposed to that ramp, I mean, because I wanted it wood, wooden and structural to the house, but they, it wasn't feasible at the time, so I put the metal one around, and because it looks so clinical-
Industrial, yeah.
It looked really clinical and industrial, that's why I put the flowers around it, and the stuff around it.
So I, I would just take a second look at that and, and see what you can do to amend it. Do I have a motion given on this special permit application, given the conditions that were discussed?
I'll make the motion on the ZBA dash twenty twenty-three dash sixteen to approve the special permit, seventy-two Glen Ave, with the conditions that were stated, discussed, and notated.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? None? Ma'am, best of luck with your business, I hope you are very successful.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming, have a good day.
Thank you for your time.
Calling the next matter, which is ZBA twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, this is two forty-seven Westminster Hill Road, Peter Maxfield. This is an application for a variance under section one eighty-one point four-one-six of the Fitchburg zoning ordinance to erect a twenty-by-twenty-four-foot carport encroaching on the required front yard setback from thirty feet and leaving fifteen feet pursuant to section one eighty-one point nine-three located in residential A. Welcome, sir. Can you please state your name and address for the minutes?
Yes, Peter Maxfield, two forty-seven Westminster Hill Road.
Okay. And you are seeking a variance, and remembering that in order to be considered for a variance, you need to demonstrate an issue with the soil, topography, shape of the lot, or existing structure, and also demonstrate that due to that condition, there is a hardship that is created. Please tell us about what you would like to do.
Okay, well initially, I, I'd like to state that my wife and I have been at our home for over twenty-three years. We've worked hard to maintain it, keep it nice both inside and out. Now that her and I are both retired, the removal of snow from the driveway from the vehicles is getting tougher and tougher. Thus the, the idea for the carport. Now, in regard to our property, that we have a, a good-sized property, the problem is, if you look at the plot plan, at the end of the driveway, there's a drop-off of approximately, I mean, it's probably thirty feet, all of that, if not more. The driveway itself is just over forty feet. Feasibly, there's no way to extend that with any type of a retaining wall or anything like that, it's just not financially feasible. So because we have ample room on either side, in other words, I have eighty feet to the, to the east, another hundred feet to the, to the west, there's no issue with a neighbor on either one of those sides. Approximately seventy-eight years ago, we had the driveway redone with a binder and topcoat. In the process of doing so, there were very large boulders found that had to be taken out, in other words, it's very, very stony soil. We also had a stamped concrete walkway put in. In that process, same issue, they came across all kinds of boulders. So the, the, the idea of trying to fit this carport, not having the thirty feet, we had, we only have fifteen to sixteen feet that we can come back to feasibly fit it. That, again, as I mentioned, on top of, you know, the, the difficulty with moving snow and so forth. So for that reason, you know, we applied to get the carport and for the, to sit before the board here.
Okay. Thank you. I am gonna open this to public comment at this time. Is there any person present virtually who would like to speak on, for, or against this matter? Is there any person within the building who would like to speak on, for, or against- Is there any person within the building who would like to speak on, for, or against this matter? Seeing none, I am going to move to board questions. And I'm just going to ask, does any board member have a question they would like to ask the petitioner?
Just, just some basic stuff, Peter. How are you going to secure it?
We visited that several different ways. As I mentioned with the, the soil, the topography, and what we encountered with the driveway and such, we first looked at piers. Then we looked at diamond piers. And it's just not feasible because we would have to take up so much of the driveway. We'd have to be tearing it up. So financially and realistically, it just wouldn't make any sense. So what I did is I reached out to a friend of mine, an architect here in town. We had a long discussion, and he came up, is willing to back me up with this 24-inch anchor bolts, L-bolts, epoxy into the ground, continuous line of support every four feet.
Probably will do it.
Yeah, that's with, that's with a mushroom cut underneath the binder.
I know that those, they allow for like a helical style pier as well, like the manufacturer, they usually give you a detail, so something like that, yeah, that will just keep it down. Main concern, obviously, is we want your carport to be in your yard.
Yes, well, actually, and in addition to that, using the Mass Amendments for the roof load, we went, we went 15, 15 PSF on the dead and 40 on the live for the trusses, and then the uplift of the wind is rated for 129. So that's all in my spec sheets.
Sounds good. Why didn't, you didn't want to build it?
Well, actually, I did the, I did the takeoff on it, and to do it in steel, it actually worked financially better.
Yeah.
We saved quite a bit of money.
Yeah, I figured that much.
And then with the, with the, with the individuals I have that are going to help me out with this, we have, all have extensive backgrounds in construction, and we should, we should put this up, you know, putting up trusses and that kind of thing, it's a nice way to build, it's sturdy, and the spec sheets look really good.
All right, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Byrne?
Mike, again, Mike and I were out to the property, and we visited, and we talked to Peter Murray about the proposed carport that he wants to put there. Now, this board has at times said no to anything that is encroaching on the front...
Front yard setback.
The front setback. But there, there's nothing in this area or the residence around him that has a standard setback. And where he plans on placing this carport is on a curve, and it's on the proper side of the curve where it should be, so that cars coming to it see it from both ways. So it's not, the 15 feet is more than enough for him to put up this property line. So I think that he should be given the variance.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I agree. I also think the topography is...
Yeah, that's the only place you can put it.
I was going to say, your topography is clearly a hardship.
When he says 30 feet, it's more like 40 feet. You look down when you go up there.
It's pretty far.
It's, it's a big drop.
Don't hit the gas instead of the brake.
Yes, sir.
I think your hardship is bona fide, yeah.
If there is no other questions, I'm going to move to deliberations.
Perfect.
All right, so we're going to close the hearing and move to deliberating on your request, okay? Thank you. I'm open to board comments, but looking at the variance criteria, I cannot think of a better example of an issue of topography being a condition that is affecting the ability to use the property. One step off that drop, and you are down 40 feet. There is no place else
Right.
for there to, for this structure to be put on that property. You know, and I think that some board members probably examined whether there was another access point into the property, but the fact of the matter is that your house and the driveway sit up here, and the rest of your land is down here. I, I think this definitely meets the criteria as far as topography for a variance. In addition, again, I agree that there is a hardship created with the inability to have a, have a garage anywhere else, and after receiving 27 inches of snow, I'm sure everybody would agree, it's a hardship not to have a garage as you get older. And then finally, because there are a couple other properties in the vicinity on the right-hand side of the road that have garages that are built into the upper part of the hill that do not meet the setback for the same reason, I don't think this derogates from the purpose of the zoning ordinance, I think it's consonant with the rest of the neighborhood. Does anybody else have any comment or additions or contradictions to that?
Spot on.
Thank you.
I have one comment.
Yes.
Couldn't have done better myself.
My observation of the property was that it is meticulously maintained
Mm-hmm.
and cared for impeccably, and I certainly think that the applicant will do an excellent job constructing this carport, if it's based on what I saw, so that's the comment I have about it. I was very, very impressed.
Everyone doesn't know this, but Peter is a master carpenter who worked at Monty Tech for many years as a teacher.
Right.
I'm not worried about the quality.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
That too.
Yeah, I thought the house was meticulously kept in the yard as well, and thank you for doing that. Does any board member have a condition they would like to offer? Mr. McLaughlin, no? I had considered whether to offer a condition that the site be kept clean during construction and construction debris not be put away, but I think that your reputation states that that will not be an issue.
Thank you.
I'd like to entertain a motion on this application for a variance.
We're going to stay on the roll, Cat.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion under ZBA 2023-17, grant the variance to Peter Maxfield for the property 247 Westminster Hill Road, with the dimensional relief requested.
Which was 15 feet? That the setback be at least 15 feet from the roadway?
From my property line, yep.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? The variance is granted, sir. I am opposed to most variances. They are hard, the hardest relief that we give. This is the most compelling application for a variance I've ever seen. So good luck with the construction proper, project, and let us know your opinion.
Thank you all very much on behalf of my wife and I. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling the next matter, which is ZBA 2023-18. This is for Zero Airport Road, William Gleason. This is a request for a variance under Section 181.416 of the Fitchburg zoning ordinance to construct a 24 by 50 steel building on a 7,959 square foot lot, not conforming to the side yard setback pursuant to Section 181.93 located in the industrial district. Welcome to the meeting. If you could each state your name and address for the minutes.
William Gleason, 579 South Street, Fitchburg.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Steve Ballard. I'm from Haley Ward in Leominster, here supporting Mr. Gleason.
Welcome, Mr. Ballard. We are always glad to see a professional at our meetings.
Thank you.
So thank you for coming. Can you, can you tell me a little bit about the project, please?
So the applicant is proposing a building on a very narrow, small lot, 40 feet wide, 40 feet of frontage at the street. And they've owned it since 2010, and they were granted from the board a special permit to operate a landscape business since then. It was reviewed yearly until 2015. Among some of the comments as it was being reviewed was more for beautification in the front of the lot, like coming into it, and also there were several questions on several years about when he was going to put a building in. The land itself is, the soil type is a Hinckley 245A soil classification, which is a sandy, gravelly soil, very permeable. So anything that ends up on the soil will quickly get into the soil. Right now, presently, Mr. Gleason is storing, he has a trailer, and stores some of his equipment and tools on the property. It is surrounded by a chain link fence. He has kept the front up with some trap rock and some plantings. Over the years, he's maintained that. The proposal of the building, because it's so narrow, is that there will be a door in the front and the back to allow him to pass through it, so that he can get off the street, pass through the building, into the back, be able to unload, and then at the end of the day, store everything in his building, which would enable him to keep everything undercover. So everything would be enclosed, there wouldn't be anything subject to the weather, as it is now. And over the years, which he will speak more to, he has had a hardship of burglary and crime and damage to his equipment, stolen equipment, damage to his vehicles, that it's just, it's cost thousands of dollars for him. And he's finally in the position that he wants to put the building in, and this would enable him to avoid that hardship, along with allowing it to protect the land, the soil to keep all the equipment inside of the building. And also, as far as the, sort of local surroundings, to the left, as you're looking at it from the street, there's a road construction company, and to the right, it's a truck rental, Penske operation. For the, for the building that he's going to put up, it would definitely make it more aesthetic for that area. It would allow, you wouldn't see the trailer or any of his equipment, everything would be contained within the building.
So the request is based on, as far as the variant criteria go, soil and shape of the lot?
So the shape of the lot is rectangular. The, because of, it was created in 1972, and because of the sideline offsets presently, they would, they restrict it to there's no area that you could put anything. So that doesn't allow him to put any building in there presently at all. It's fairly level, and as I said, very permeable, so anything that would be on, come off of the machines due to weather, perhaps a miss, you know, a mishap, leak, that would definitely go right into the ground. Whereas if there was a building, it would be able to contain everything in there, and they would be able to deal with it, and it wouldn't affect the soil, and it wouldn't run off onto anybody else's property.
On the plan that's been submitted, it's marked trailer storage in the rear. Is there going to be further vehicle storage in the back of the building?
What it is, is I have a small dump trailer in my equipment trailer. That's going to be behind the garage.
Okay. Have you examined moving the building on the lot to increase the setbacks from the seven and a half feet that is marked on the plan? Is there a reason that it's at the front as opposed to, the lot appears to widen as you go towards the back?
Why is it not set back more?
Yeah.
Honestly, because I'm going to run a water line, and I know how much a water line's cost per foot
Mm-hmm.
underground. I'm not opposed to it.
Mm-hmm.
But I still would like the room behind that building for trailer storage, because there's no way I could get all that stuff inside the building for storage.
Mm-hmm.
Given the size of the lot, it's easier, it would be easier to go through the front, into the back, and then maneuver to turn around to get out where it's a little bit wider, versus if you tried pushing it back, you'd be restricting the area in the back that you could actually turn the vehicle, usually, you know, a truck and the trailer, so it's fairly long.
Can you estimate how many, how many square, how many feet in length is required for that kind of turnaround and storage?
Put the trailer in the back?
To do what you're just...
What we would do is I would go drive through, drop the trailer, and I have a machine that can spin the trailer after I drop it.
Mm-hmm.
And then I could just back the truck up, do a U-turn right there, because there's plenty of room.
Mm-hmm.
And when I want to leave the next day, I would just back up the trailer.
Okay.
Because there's really not room where you could back up a trailer there and do a 360.
You are, and I, I think I had this question, but then I understood that you're going to drive through the building, because I thought with seven and a half foot setbacks on either side, you're not getting anything around the building.
Right.
Right?
Correct.
Is there still, but there's still going to be equipment stored within the building? So it's not just going to be a building that you pass through, it's going to be storage in there?
No. Everything's going to go inside the building.
Except for the trailer that you're...
Yes, and possibly a truck.
Okay.
One of the bigger trucks, and it'll, everything will be behind.
All right. You're going to be able to maintain the 50-foot setback in the rear?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Have you had any comments from the neighbors on what your proposal is?
None.
Okay. Have you reached out to talk to them at all?
Yes.
Okay. Can you tell me just a history of, you said that you've had a lot of theft there. Can you tell me what's been happening? Has it been people going over the fence, people cutting through the fence? How is that happening?
Uh, through it, over it, I don't know if you've all been there, but I hung my campaign signs. Wherever you see a campaign sign on the fence is where they've cut holes in the fence.
Okay.
And they go through there, and if you're familiar with tractor-trailer doors, it's a padlock on the bottom. When I first bought that thing, I had a nice padlock on it, and I wasn't thinking crime or anything. Had all my stuff in there, and you can just snap the padlock with bolt cutters, and with a couple of fingers, you could push these doors, because they're on these cables.
Mm-hmm.
You go right up, you take whatever you want, you leave. So once I caught on to that, after, I used to call the police, and they would do police reports in the beginning, but there's nothing really the police could do unless you're car right-handed.
About how many times would you say you've been, had a burglary?
Before I, before I got spot on the trailer, it was probably two or three times. And I actually, I could actually remember one was on Christmas Eve, 2011, because I actually went by the shop on Christmas Day, and I'm driving by with my wife, I'm like, what the hell, excuse my language, what the hell is that? And I saw the door open a little, and I'm like, oh, no. And I went in there, and it had been broken into, and things were taken. Like there was a, that time, I think it was a jackhammer, a post hole digger, and maybe a chainsaw. So I cut the cable for the trailer, which means you need to have a lot of strength to lift that thing up now.
Mm-hmm.
And they still got it up, and that time, that was probably two years later. In the meantime, there was like broken windshields on some, a couple of my trucks, and like, they stole hand tools and everything, because there's only so much stuff I can keep going with a trailer for. So when I cut the cable, they still went in there, they cut out, they stole a $1,200 cutoff saw. That really upset me. So I had to get smarter, and now it's the way it's been probably for like five years now. I nail boards to it, like there's two-by-fours and cut sheets of plywood that I bolt into that door with special screws. And now when I want to go in there to get tools, it probably takes me a half hour to get in there, to take all the bolts off, to open up the door, and then bolt the stuff back on. And in the meantime, the last, just in December, I'm fast, but I'm going back and forth in December, I have a white international truck, and I went in there to start it up, and it went click, click, click. It actually did nothing, not even click, click, click. It did nothing. I'm like, what's going on now? This truck usually starts. They had stolen my three batteries out of it. So, and there's, there's been other things, like I said, the windshield smashed, there's three holes in the fence.
Mm-hmm.
And in the trailer, if you look down the, the front part of the trailer, but it's the back, if you look up from the street, there's a door on it, because it was a construction office. They smashed into that, and they stole all the stuff out of there early on, too. So I have a sheet of plywood over that cut, and that, that hasn't been broken into.
Mm-hmm.
And there's, they've broken into my main truck, it stole the tools out of it. So now I had to get these, you must know, guys know what a rigid toolbox is, the ones where you put the padlocks inside, and you bolt it to the truck. Now that's what I have. Those are new, and it's working so far. And I have a truck, a brand-new truck, I don't even put there, because I don't want to leave a brand-new truck there overnight. And when I leave my backhoe there, I put a truck, my backhoe against the truck, and I have to back my trailer all the way up against it, because these type of backhoes is Gabota, it's a universal key.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't want that thing taking it. I have a floodlight on the place, but it's very, very dark in that little area, and you could have free roam in that place to do whatever you want. and you could have free roam in that place to do whatever you want.
Are you planning on conducting any other uses other than storage of your equipment on the, in the building?
No, it's just going to where I run my business out of.
So, why is the water necessary?
Wash trucks. I'm going to have a bathroom in there, too.
Okay.
I just don't want a building-
Are you going to have an office in there?
It'll be, there'll be a desk in there, maybe. It's not going to be like an office, I'm not going to have someone working in there full-time. It's just going to be-
Are you going to have any customers coming on site?
There wouldn't be a reason to, but it could happen, because I'm not going to be selling stuff out of there. Everything's over the phone, internet, and I go to the customers.
You have a frame for a sign there, but no frame, no sign.
That's right, that was another thing.
Yeah.
I came, I went there one morning to go to work, and the thing was lying on the ground. And I'm like, how the hell did this go? Because it was, excuse my language again, sorry. How did this end on the ground? And I, upon, it looked like it was, like, kicked off or, because it wasn't windy the night before or anything. I don't know how it fell. I'm assuming, you know, you don't assume, but it looks like someone just smashed it off, because that was on there good. I had that up there real good.
Mm-hmm.
And the sign, it's still in good condition, it just needs to be cut up a little, the sides where it was all torn up. And that was a very expensive sign, too.
Yeah, and put back up, yeah. Looking at the 2011 approval from the planning board, there is a condition that you're going to add arborvitae screening at the perimeter of the lot. Was that done?
There was-
Because I didn't see any in the front.
There was, I put up a sitter instead. And I actually did have a couple of arborvitae then, that I ripped them out.
Okay.
Because I wanted to be able to see in there, because all those plants was blocking everything.
And for security, it was better that the property be visible?
Yes.
Okay. And you're going to maintain that same kind of visibility throughout the property?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I am going to move forward on public comment. I think we had some additional pictures that were submitted by you of the exterior rendering of the building. Okay. I'm going to pass these around to board members so that they can see if, if anybody hasn't seen them. We also had a communication, we had a letter from the office of John Cronin. Mr. William Gleason has applied for a variance to build a structure on his property on Airport Road. Mr. Gleason, who has sued the Commonwealth for 25 years as a corrections officer, purchased the property in 2010 and was permitted to operate Gleason Landscaping out of the property in 2011. Once financially viable, he planned to build a structure on the property to house and secure any necessary equipment. During the interim, Mr. Gleason was the victim of multiple break-ins, the last one occurring in December of '22. Currently, Mr. Gleason has new landscaping vehicles and equipment stored off-site due to fear of another break-in. Given the circumstances, I respectfully request that you consider Mr. Gleason's request for variance to ensure that he can operate his business safely and effectively. I thank you for your time on this matter and your service to the Pittsburgh community. Please contact with any questions. So, nice letter. I am going to now ask whether there's any person present online who has a comment to make, would like to ask the question, who would like to speak on for or against this And I'm going to ask whether there's any person present within this building who would like to make a comment or speak on for or against this petition. Seeing none, we are going to move on to board questions, and if you could answer the board's questions as they come around to you. Mr. Gallagher, I'm going to start on your side first.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Would the proposed structure be made, is it a metal building?
Yes.
Okay. And you'd mentioned break-ins before. You confident with the selection of overhead doors and the entrance door would be safe?
Very.
Okay.
And there's going to be video surveillance, I'm going to put a alarm system in it.
Mm-hmm.
Not going to be 100% foolproof, but it's going to be better than what's there now.
Better than what you have? And you're confident with it?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. No further questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. McLaughlin, would you like to go next?
Didn't realize this until I looked at the plan, that plot to the right of you, is that something that the city has taken in tax title, or is it just an old piece that they've owned for you?
I think it's an old piece that the city had, that it actually comes between the Penske, the people that own that-
Yeah.
-also own on the other side of the city land.
Okay. And then I see the piece of pie in the middle, and I'm like, huh, what were people thinking back in the day, huh?
Right.
But, I mean, this is good, because to me, it creates a buffer, even though you don't have, your own setback is, is kind of minimal, but, you know, there's a buffer on that side, and on the left side, there's a gravel-
Right.
-that, you know, they had put up a while back. So, yeah, I don't really have any questions, so, good, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Mr. Reynolds, no questions? Mr. Chartrand, any questions?
No, I don't really have any questions.
Okay. Mr. Byrne?
We were there today, and she was fine with me. Looks good.
Okay. I am now going to close the public hearing. Do you have anything more you'd like to offer before we move to deliberations?
If anybody didn't have, of the board members didn't have an opportunity to see the site, I did take a picture, and I have copies of it if anybody didn't get to visit the site, of what it looks like from the front.
I would like to see that.
Looks like, if you want to circulate it, at any time.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
That's okay.
Thank you, it was rather tough finding zero Airport Road, so, without a number, so thank you, I appreciate that.
It's almost across from Benson Street, across from all the buses.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
I have one other thing to add, too. That green trailer's going to be gone. And there's a pickup truck, you can't really see behind it, that's going to be gone, too. And the fencing, that's all going to come down, and a professional's going to put a fence up. That was me who did that, and I'm not a fencer.
What type of fence is going to be put?
It's going to be chain-linked, but it's going to be done professionally, with better grade.
Is there a selection of color available?
For the fence?
For instance, black?
I'm not opposed to black. I actually think black's much better.
Yeah. You're not going to put the slats through, though, right?
No, because I saw what happened down the street-
Mm-hmm.
...with the spray paint.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So we have finished with board questions. I'm going to close the hearing and move to deliberations. Thank you. Does any board member have a comment on this application that they'd like to make?
I'm just a little concerned about the hardship.
So, the-
On commercials, the same criteria, right?
It's the same criteria. I was just looking in the Bobrowski. I do think that this is a shape issue, where you have a lot with sufficient area and sufficient frontage, where, as I look at the lot, I think no building can be placed which meets the setback, none. The side yard setback is 25 feet, and even if we moved this building over completely to one side, that would give us 15 feet of setback.
Did that change recently?
I don't, I don't know. I think there-
I remember in the commercial districts, there was like no setbacks at one point.
Yeah, but industrial is-
Probably has some, because of the nature of the operations there.
Setbacks are, it's a 20-foot frontage, and then a 20-foot front yard setback, but then a 25-side yard, and a, oh, let me say, in an earlier conversation, I read the table wrong, it's a 20-foot rear yard setback, yeah.
But like you said, for a 24-foot wide building, what else could you put there?
So I, I think the fact that no building could be constructed, which meets the setbacks, is more in line of what is a hardship, because I don't, I certainly can't say that the criminal activity was caused by the shape of the, shape of the lot.
Which I certainly would like to grant him a hardship for that, but it's not within our scope.
But I think the inability to construct any building on this lot might qualify as a hardship.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyone else have a question, concern about the granting or denial of the variance request?
I just would like to make a comment. We've got one, two, three, four districts excluding industrial, where the previous change in zoning changed it to zero setback.
Mm-hmm.
Which, as a board member, publicly comment that that is a bit absurd. So, I really am kind of scratching my head at why industrial has such a larger requirement.
Good question, good question for our friends at the planning board.
Certainly a good comment, but not a resolvable problem tonight.
Absolutely not.
Right.
Madam Chair, could I add something?
Absolutely.
I think it would be a nice improvement to the area, looking at what is currently there, and I think it would benefit the community to see something like this, so I am in favor of what I see.
Yeah, the other thing, too, is that we have so little area for these types of businesses.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, there's almost none for construction yard, landscaping, and those types of businesses, so the feasibility of him finding a better spot would be pretty hard, too.
I would agree.
I have an in-depth comment I'd like to make now.
Remembering that it's 9:10, and there was a concern about the timeliness of this hearing.
Well taken.
Please proceed.
It's brief, just that, you know, we're looking at a variance, right? Soil shape, topography. This is an extremely unusual lot, it's extremely narrow, it's extremely long, you know, the feasibility of being able to put a structure on this property and meet setbacks, it doesn't exist. So, I'm in favor, I think we should maybe look at some conditions, you know, to just to keep the property as, you know, beautified and all that, some landscaping.
I can do that.
You know, I would make a comment as well, and it's funny that there's two in one meeting, I'm generally not in favor of variances, they're very hard to meet the criteria, but I do think this is one where if you can't construct any building due to the shape of the lot, not the area, that it would fall within that. And I agree that the proposed building would be an improvement, certainly do want to see the applicant succeed in this business. But the lack of any building available, I think, is what is really the hardship here. As far as conditions, I think that the sign should be re-erected. We have to specify that the variance is that the side yard setback be at least seven and a half feet on either side. I would like to have this constructed substantially according to the plan submitted, and that is the plan dated by Haley Ward, dated April 3, 2023. This is not a grant of a variance or permission to conduct any other use on the property, so if another use is contemplated, the applicant does need to make sure that they have the permissions to conduct that use.
Plan is submitted.
Plan is submitted. There is a April 19, 2011, planning board meeting minutes that refers to landscaping requirement. I think compliance with that plan would be a condition. I unfortunately do not have the plan in front of me, and I don't know if it's available. But it did provide for landscaping at the perimeter of the lot.
Should we be open to, you know, things have changed drastically since this board and the planning board approved? Should we look at a down-the-road review and look at landscaping once that gets, building gets erected?
I think so, I think so. I, there's been, it's a long time since that's decision. I understand the issues that arose due to screening the property and security. I would like there to be landscaping on the perimeter, and where you are in the business, I am sure that you can think of a plan that would be an appropriate look.
All right.
So we could conduct a review of that, so you could present us with the proposal for the landscaping at the perimeter at a review meeting. Chain link fence to be of solid color. Not slats, just solid color, so it's not a plain metal fence. Property to be kept in a clean and orderly condition as viewed from the road. So, no vehicle or construction debris. Site to be kept clean during construction. Any other conditions? This is not going to be, this is not for the use, so it's not going to be a sunset clause. We could put, not to be operated as a public nuisance, but again, it's not a use application. All right, hearing none, I'd like to move forward.
Review date.
A review date, thank you so much. How long do you think construction is going to take, sir?
Well, if approved, I'm going to get started on this tomorrow, honestly. So it all depends on the steel manufacturer, because I know I can get a concrete guy pretty quick, not pretty quick, but a lot faster than the steel. I'm hoping everything's done by the fall.
You're going to pour a pad, right?
Yes, with rebar.
Would you say that you're going to be completed by the end of the summer? Or would you say that it's going to be sometime next spring?
No, it'll be this year. I can't guarantee summer because of steel, and there's still supply chain issues I've noticed with these steel buildings.
Okay. If we set an October date for review, do you think that's reasonable to have the building completed? I know you're uncertain about steel, but-
Towards the end of October, or would it be always second Tuesday?
Always second Tuesday, so we would move into November, which is November the 14th.
I can push the steel companies.
Okay. It's a review.
All right.
I don't know that we're going to set a required completion date, but it's a review of how the project is going.
All right. Because I want this done ASAP, too, I have the financing and everything.
My only concern about going to November is your ability to put in the landscaping when the weather isn't so good, so.
No, I can do that. I've done-
No, I can do that. I've done it in snow before.
Okay.
So, that's the least of my worries is the landscaping, because I can get that done quick.
Okay, and November is not a barrier to that?
Nope.
No?
Unless there's a lot of snow.
14th would be the date in November, yeah. All right, so, review date, November 14th. Can I entertain a motion?
Make the motion in ZBA 2023-18 for William Gleason for the property at Zero Airport Road to grant the variance as requested with the dimensional items that are shown on the plan as submitted and with the conditions stated by the board.
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? None? Variance is granted.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Good luck.
Thank you.
I know you want to get it done, but you've got to record the permit first.
Please make sure you record the permit. We're going to move on to the last matter, which is ZBA 2023-13, 52 Norwood Street. This is a continuance of a request for a variance special permit. And we have a letter from Attorney Campabasso, who submitted a letter requesting that the application for a variance and a special permit be given leave to withdraw and without prejudice. He has looked at the issue of infectious invalidity with the building commissioner and is concerned about its effect upon the remaining, the existing building that the lot was separated from. The applicant intends to review if potential concerns, options exist that would promote the purposes of the multifamily section of the ordinance but would conform to the standards outlined therein. So, they are asking for approval of the withdrawal without prejudice. That does leave them open, of course, to resubmitting on this issue in the future. I know that Attorney Campabasso is present virtually. And we did have a request for somebody to access virtually who is not here. Right now, Mr. Camp, Attorney Campabasso, I'm going to allow you to speak if you'd like anything to add to that request.
Good evening, members of the zoning board. No, not really. I would just request that the, based on my conversation with the building commissioner, if there is a possible way that the applicant can somehow comply with the multifamily, we'd like an opportunity for that to exist. So, I'll just submit on my letter and request that the, and ask that the request for the special permit and variance be withdrawn without prejudice.
Very good. Thank you, sir. I'm going to ask whether there is any person present in this building who would like to make a comment on for or against this request to withdraw the application without prejudice. Going to ask whether there's any person online who would like to make a request to withdraw, make a comment on for or against the request to withdraw. Seeing none, does any board member have any comment or question before we consider the request? Seeing none, I am going to close the public hearing. And I am going to ask for a motion on this request to withdraw without prejudice. Does anyone have a motion?
Is this, you know, I look at the lands, and I don't see how there is any possibility to construct anything.
I'm sorry, sir. This is not the time for public comment.
So, I don't know if I'm comfortable in voting to allow for leave to withdraw without prejudice only with the fact that I don't want to have these properties keep coming back before the board with a different owner, different thought process. I'm just throwing that out there, you know?
I've looked at the property. It's a very steep slope. And it's difficult for me to imagine a property built, a house built on there, especially given that I'm not sure how it would fit. I don't think we'd meet setbacks.
Exactly.
You know, while I agree with that, I'm satisfied that this property is simply not going to meet the requirement. Separating the property from the existing house, unless the zoning dimensional requirements are changed, it's simply never going to meet it. That being said, there may be, there may be some other option that's presented to us. And I don't know that I'm willing to foreclose that personally myself. I think the remedy is adequate. Anyone else have a comment?
I don't think this one will turn into a Lunenburg situation or a, what's the other one that we had? That's a six-family that can never be used, that is too big and all that. I think that the infectious invalidity is really the nail in the coffin for this one. It's going to be tough. They'd have to have a completely different plan.
I'll make that motion then, Madam Chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
None? All right, so the application is withdrawn without prejudice. Counsel, have an excellent evening.
Thank you.
All right, that being the last item on our agenda, unless anyone else has something to say. Mr. Byrne is going to make a motion for us to adjourn. Is there a second? No, everybody wants to stay?
Well, before we close, this gentleman might be here for something and maybe...
I'm just, uh...
We'd like to hear that.
My family's owned 19 Grand Street for approximately 100 years. And this guy moving in and tearing up the lots across the street are just, it's, it's going to change the whole scope of the whole neighborhood. Because I heard a little bit about your stuff last time. And he has a right to build stuff, but he has to also, he's asking for variance to expand things and do this. He can do what he wants on his lot, but not a variance, like, I didn't see the plans or look at the plans, how it was working, so...
Neither have we.
Oh, you haven't? Or any pictures or any renderings?
Don't leave it's been before us. 19 Grand Street?
19 Grand Street?
No, that is 52 Norwood.
This is 52.
Talking about 52.
Oh, you're talking about this property that we just...
Get great, and then the, you stopped the variance or whatever, whatever you're talking about.
On Norwood Street.
Yeah, but we see that from the house. We see that whole, we see the next house up. So, with the variance, I didn't see a plan, and if I see plans, I can tell what it is because I'm a carpenter and craftsman and things of this nature. So, I don't know what I'm saying, but I don't want to...
That's okay. You don't have to worry. It's been withdrawn.
Right. But you talked about the other stuff, which, that's why I made the comment, interrupted and made a comment. But we've lived in that house for 100, we own it for 100 years. And we love the neighborhood, and it's wonderful, and we don't want to change the MO, look of the neighborhood. Because I like Pittsburgh. I like the way it is, and it really, for me personally, off the record, I don't like them tearing down the Ivor Johnson building. I don't like them tearing all the old buildings down because the wonderfulness of Pittsburgh is the old buildings.
So, let me say, sir, that we are in fact quite on the record right now. And I have a copy of the plan that was submitted. I would be happy to give it to you. You can take it home. But I think we're clear that you would be against the granting of the variance in the development of the neighborhood in that manner where it's been taken care of. I think we're going to close the comment at this point in time.
And Ivor Johnson is being redeveloped.
All right.
Or the factory?
Any factory?
Okay, because I've wandered through there, and it's a daddy place.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
You did.
To adjourn.
And do we have a second? All those in favor? This hearing is hereby adjourned. This meeting is adjourned. Everyone have a wonderful evening.